Thing we're gonna do is, uh, we'll have a prayer, we'll ask Henry to lead some prayer and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we come this morning thanking you for blessing us to see another day. We thank you, Father, for the blessings you bestow upon all of us in our nation and our state. Lord, we ask you to bless this meeting this morning, that it will be conducted in a way that will bring glory to you and bless all those who we serve. We thank you for the privilege. Bless now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God and the living with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first thing on our agenda, we'll have a, we need to approve the agenda, but we've got a few changes to make. First thing we need to do is, Commissioner Horr has asked to be added to the agenda for a presentation before the public hearing for the LCG Library Finance Issue. We've also added Patrice, she has a public hearing she needs to have, has been advertised under Department Reports, which will move to the top. She'll be A, and everything else will move down 1. She's sick this morning, uh, she needs to get out of here, I think. And, uh, I believe that's all we've got right now. Any, uh, any comments, or will approve the agenda, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as revised.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, the next thing we've got to approve of the minutes, we have two sets of minutes before y'all. One was for the December 7th meeting, and another for the special meeting we had on December 21st. Are there any amendments to the minutes, as you seen them? Not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, we'll move into our census comments area. Okay, uh, the first thing, one on the, uh, is Anthony Felton. Anthony?
Good morning, everybody.
Hey Anthony, how you doing this morning?
I'm pretty good. Um, my opinion, my thing was we talked, read about is about an opinion on recording and video closed meetings. First of all, I hope we will start out with a positive year instead of having another negative year again. Being negative when it comes to these meetings does not solve a problem at all. In fact, being negative only causes problems. At the last meeting, we had, I could hear some, someone in the audience making negative comments. I'm not pointing fingers on who it was, however, I would like for that person or persons to show their respect to the people up front and to their fellow citizens. This isn't elementary school. I hope I did not step on anybody's shoes about this. My concern or opinion is about having closed meetings either voice recorded or video recorded. A closed meeting to me is when our people before us are having a meeting with each other without public involved. If you were to have a meeting like that, voice, video recorded, you might as well not call it a closed meeting. I notice when the meeting is getting ready to close, the camera is gonna turn off from the right and to the back right-hand side corner. Having a closed meeting recorded can easily be leaked out in the wrong hands. If that was to happen, it could easily end up on the internet sites such as YouTube or other internet sites where the public can see, and maybe they can edit or change the videoing. That to me causes a big problem in the community. We don't need that to happen especially here. If there is something that our commissioners and other people who work the county needs to know, I'm sure they will fill us in. A closed meeting to me means no audio recorder of any type. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. All right, uh, Mr. Ed Booth? Hey Ed, how you doing?
Right, and how are you?
All right.
As a veteran and as a, um, citizen of Gates County, I purposely stood back from the library issue that you've been discussing. But I have some questions that I really feel haven't been answered by anyone to my satisfaction. And I would like to not bore you, but to try to stimulate some thinking, some additional thinking on the following items. In 10 years, Gates County has grown 10, only 16 percent. That's according to the 2010 census. Persons per household is at 2.79 persons per household. And these questions are, like I said, open-ended and general in nature, so I just ask that you bear with me for a minute. I'd like to know if the public and the county commissioners feel that the expenditure of 1.5 million roughly would justify building a new library with only a 2.79 person per household? And also the per capita use of libraries, and I'm giving you these statistics off of the state's library website. The per capita use is only 2.5. And this lines up with the 2.79 per household that justifies other alternatives. In other words, with only a 2.5 person per household and the use of 2.79, with an expenditure of 1.5 million, does this justify looking at something else? Reclaiming another building, modifications to that to accommodate a new library? Additionally, have we met all the requirements for eligibility for grants? And I'd like to specifically address a couple of items with that. Submission of annual and current long-range plans of service for North Carolina libraries. Provide to the State Library of North Carolina an annual audit. Have we audited our library system and submitted those requirements, or met those requirements? It appears that we're meeting the 40-hour-per-week opening schedule. It looks like we're about 40 and a half hours. The other question I have is the per capita use in the state of North Carolina as an average is 4.72. And again, this is according to the 2010 census. Lumped with Abomoral, which it appears that this system is lumped in the Abomoral system, it comes out to 2.5 per capita use. Does this justify the expenditure? Also, if we're having a true public library, why are we not listed in the statistical information independently of the Abomoral system? Being lumped in with the system, the Abomoral system appears to be a negative as far as I'm concerned if we're gonna expend that kind of money. And finally, I haven't, I know that you operate under the state statutes, but I'm, my, my question is, is what limits your spending authority? What governs and limits the commissioner's spending authority? Do we reach a threshold on that spending authority where items should go to the public for vote? Now, I've given you a lot of numbers and a lot of statistics, I'm prepared to provide those to you for what I've spoken from here today. And, uh, I think that we should come to you with solutions and not problems. And that's what this is really all about. So if I can be of any help in looking at some of these numbers, I would be happy to do that.
Would you provide them to us?
I will.
Or copy to us? I'd appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, uh, next on our agenda, Mr. Gilbert Cherry.
Good morning.
Good morning Gilbert.
I have a few questions. To lay the groundwork, first of all, does the county commissioners have a job description? Written job description? Most jobs have a job description, does anybody have an answer for that?
Far as I know, not. I can probably, I can answer that pretty easy.
Don't have any job description whatsoever?
Would you like to write one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could, man.
We're governed by general statutes.
I will, uh...
Only, uh, only an oath of office.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the general statute spells out the responsibilities and duties of the county commissioner. I don't have the exact number, but it pretty much gives all of the duties and authorities and so forth. So when you read that, you'll basically find, uh...
All right, in, in that statute, is there anything in there that says commissioners should listen to the citizens of the county? With an open ear?
Certainly, that's, that's something, uh, that commissioners should do, certainly. I, I won't say that it's spelled out, but I'm sure that it would be recommended.
All right, my next, my next question is, why don't the citizens of Gates County have any voice as to how much of our money is spent? Can't we get an answer to that?
You have a voice.
With an open ear?
I, I hear everything you said. I may not always agree with it, but I do hear, I, I, I may not always agree with everything I hear, but I do listen to everything I hear.
Well, the first...
Do, the question I'd like to ask you, do you agree with everything you hear?
No.
Okay, that's, that's a good answer there.
But most of the time, if...
Would you expect me to agree with everything I hear?
No. But most of the time, the majority rules. And the first meeting I ever attended, when the library was voted on, and, and let me say this, I am not against improving the library system, I've never been against it. But in that meeting, there was a whole lot more people in this courtroom was hollering no when it was pushed down our throats. That was a deaf ear as far as I was concerned. Now, I have, I took for myself to get up a petition. I have over 600 signatures. Asking for a referendum, asking that the county be entitled to a vote on this library system and the money spent on it. And I heard Mr. Booth talking about the library costing 100, I mean 1.5 million roughly. But is that all it's costing? I understand that the, Mr. Old has donated a piece of property for the library, am I correct in that?
Yes, sir.
Where is that lot at? The location?
If you, if you're familiar with it at all, it's on the Commerce, Commerce Drive, Sony Lane, three lots back roughly.
Three lots back.
Merchants Commerce.
Merchants Commerce Lane, three lots back.
And it's come to my attention that we have to build a road to that lot, is that correct?
Well, there's gonna be a road built there, we're not building, he's building a road back there.
Who's paying for it?
Tim Olds.
He is, I've got some...
He's building the road.
I got some...
You've got some bogus information.
Well, I, that's right, I got some wrong information.
All right.
But, uh, we spent 100, $150,000 for architect fees, am I correct in that? You voted on that first meeting? Don't you think it's a little high?
Not really. We, we got quotes for the new, to repair the library across the road, and it was over $200,000 quote for the architect fees for that.
I must be in the wrong business.
Yeah.
Well, to shorten this thing up, I wanna ask, will the commissioners entertain our petition?
If you were presenting a petition, the process, the, the proper channels would be done with the petition, that's, that's what I can say right now. It will be, have to be, each name will be verified, and from that point on, it'll be turned over to the attorneys for, at that point, that's all I can say right now. I can't, until we, until it's verified by the election committee, that's what will be done from that point.
All right, I have copies of them that I will furnish.
If you'll hand them to me, I'll make sure the process gets started. Thank you.
It's just copies.
Thank you.
I have the original, and there are even more that's coming. There were some sheets out that people were getting.
What time?
This was not a canvas deal, this was a volunteer petition, signing of a petition at different locations in this county. And there's some sheet, so there will be more to that.
Okay. I'll start the process with it.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, next on our agenda, we're gonna be moving forward, Patrice, are you ready?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Patrice, sorry you don't feel good.
Yeah, it's okay. I wanted to present the Community Transportation Program grant application for FY 2013. The grant application is pretty much the same as last year. There, the, the amount is capped at $136,000 for admin. We are not requesting any facilities, um, any technology improvement. The only other things that we're requesting is capital to replace three vehicles that have met their life expectancy. And the three vehicles are, that we're requesting to be replaced are with light vehicles with the exception of one standard van that is changing to a centerhouse van because the state no longer participates in the cost of standard vans. And that total, and, and the, the vehicle, laddering on the vehicle. So there's $1,800 for the laddering on the vehicles, and there is... $111,450 for the replacements of the three vehicles. And the match for the funds that is 85 percent for admin, 15 percent local funds, which is being used through fairs. And the match for the capital is 10 percent, which is also being met through fairs.
It's basically the same, other than the noted differences.
Yes, sir.
Year by year.
And it's all, it's all done with the grant and, and the matching funds is done with fair, fair, right?
Yes, sir.
There's no county money actually going into it.
No, county.
Kenny, would you like to say a thing? You want to know, you sit on that board?
Oh, I think this is one of our really great programs that we have here in the county. Eighty-five percent of this money is, is state money that's coming in. And we have 15 percent that is local money, and that local money comes through the fairs that she charges, the two or three dollars, the four dollars, whatever they charge, carry these fairs to the different towns around. The county puts very little money into it. And when I say very little, I, I really don't know a figure, but it's probably in the repairs to the facility up there where it's all stationed at. Excuse me. So, in other words, it's, 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 it's county money through fairs and, and a small amount of out-of-pocket type money from the county. And I think it's a really great program, especially for the, the people that, that need to go to work, need to go to a doctor, uh, those type of services.
Tony, the disposition of these vehicles?
Mm-hmm.
Is it a different method than what we would use for a police car?
No, it's the exact same method. Typically, what we'll do is, if there's a need in another department, we'll maybe give that van or the minivan specifically to that department. But excluding something of that, you'll, you'll see it go on gov deals just like any other ones. I think this past month, we sold one or two different ones that were GITS vans on gov deals, so they go pretty quickly.
Anything else, Patrice?
I'd just like to request to open the public hearing.
Okay, we need to open a public hearing, do I have a motion to open public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All right, yeah, a motion and a second for public hearing on the, uh, Community Transportation Grant. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All, we're now in public hearing to discuss the, to take public, uh, input for the Community Transportation Grant, our GITS program. Are there any comments from the, from the citizens of Gates County about this? Earl?
I guess you won't be able to microphone.
If you don't mind.
I guess Kenny, Jerniken, and the rest of y'all have me exactly the way you want me to do because I can't talk much and long at the time, and that's good for y'all. But I just, I've heard this over and over coming to these meetings, and I just made a note of this because Mr. Jerniken made the point that 85 percent of this money was state money and 15 percent, uh, is local money, is that right?
Well, the local money is actually in the fairs that she charges.
Right. But the point that I've heard many of you commissioners make over and over, and I just wanted to be on record to say this, when you say state money, it's like that you're getting money, uh, from something that, that doesn't cost you. And it's, it's, whether we pay for it in the county, or whether we pay for it in the state, somebody's paying for it because there's no free meal. And I just wanted to make that perfectly clear because it sounds good for commissioners to say, well, this is federal money, or this is state money. Well, it's your money, it's your money.
Thank you, Earl. Any other comments? If not, we'll take a mo, entertain a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
A second? All right, motion made, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Any comments from the commissioners on the, uh, grant application?
Yeah, I, I too would just like to kind of reiterate what Kenny said. It's, it's a great program, it's served the community, especially the elderly. And, uh, I'd really hate to see the county without it. I, I know and hear of many people that benefit from it, that truly, if it was not in place, the quality of life for Gates County citizens would, would, uh, would, would go lacking, so, uh, I'm thankful for the GITS program and thankful it's been put in place, and I, I hope that we'll continue to support it.
Any other comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion to accept the grant application as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Patrice. All right, the next on here, Sandy Pittman, our finance officer?
I came in late, I assume we have not done the public hearing?
No, no.
Library financing, so you all will need to handle getting that started, and...
Okay.
I don't know that I need to be directly involved in that, and I've got a budget ordinance to do once you all completed that.
All right, um, we have to have, the LGC requires a pub, uh, actual public hearing advertised and recorded minutes for the application for the grant, the loan, the loan that we are applying for, approval from them, to be able to apply for, for the library financing. So we have to have a public hearing that was advertised, uh, in the summer for this, for today. So at this point, we need a motion to open public hearing?
Like the ground?
Oh, yeah, actually, you wanted to move in before that, right? I'm sorry, Johnny.
That's correct.
I forgot, I had it written down here, but I put that around here. I tell you what, we will, we'll hold up, and Johnny, you wanna get set up and do your...
It's on the, it's on the long term. Good morning and happy new year to all of you folks out there. Glad to see you this morning. And I too, Anthony, hope that 2012 is very productive for all of us. And I'm looking forward to it.
How about lights, Johnny?
He's got up yet, I don't think. Some reason.
This one with the lights, Roger?
Oh, yeah. No, you're going to go outside and get the breakers off.
I don't know which one it is.
The cord is going to work.
All right, that's fine.
You've got to keep it in line.
Green light, Eddie.
Hit the F seven key. See if that sometimes just...
Looked up, dropped it.
Colleen, you got your computer?
It's showing. It ain't working.
Turn the, have we got it turned on?
Mm-hmm. The light's on.
Yeah, because I think what's happening is it's going to come up. Okay.
Ain't white. Still white, no? That's coming.
Again?
Yep.
You got to have the same one that would come up.
Apparently, I plugged by being plugged in.
There we go. Yeah, with it blue on.
Is it focused?
Yeah, I don't know. It's going to take a while for you. Keep moving down. You see it there?
All right.
Get that, get that drive and drive. And. That one. Yeah, get on. We're going to open up damage authorization too. Okay? Okay, last meeting, the auditor was here, and JP Jones and I was questioning and talking to him about our, really our audit, and started asking about, a little bit about long-term debt. So that's what this is basically about. Okay, next screen. You're going to have to change your display because it's not what's happening is... Your display, what it's set on, over is that having to be back to far away.
Or we can move the screen back.
Well, that's going to wait until you get it up there. Which I don't know how, I don't know how far it was last time. Still got, still got, still got, still got, yeah, that come forward some more.
There you go. I'll be able to focus if you want.
It's got something in the back. Maybe this will work. But anyhow, all right, what that was about is long-term debt. First thing that we start off, we had obviously in a county government, in a state government, you had to have a balanced budget. And that's all this is signifying. Revenues on the left, expenses on the right, on the balance beam. And when you turn this in, it must be perfectly horizontal or level. So that's what we're talking about. Next screen, Hannah. So then the next thing you start talking about is when you start budgeting for these things. Well, when you start budgeting, revenues and expenses, they got to be equal. What this is signifying is here, you start forecasting your revenues, and you forecast your revenues are low. They're not coming up to what your expenditure tools are. So what do you have to do? You got two options in this case. We got to give you an if-tax increase, or we got to go get some money out of the fund balance. One of the two things to make it balanced because, or we could cut expenses. Probably don't want to do this. Most of the time, people don't want to. You're going to have a lot of heartache and stuff if you do, or you're not going to meet your obligations. So these are the two things that happen here. Well, back in 2009, we kind of did something like that. So we'll show that later. And what happened last time? Revenues exceed your expenditure tools. What happens? Two things could happen. We put the money into fund balance, fund balance grows. Or we reduce the tax rate to youth citizens and give that money back to you going forward to balance this thing out. So you got those kind of two options, and you can see here. Suppose I wanted to increase taxes on youth citizen. What do you think I would do? Well, I would forecast my revenues low to what I thought they might be. And I would put my expenses where they were normal. Might cut them some, but I would come in low. And then I would try to sell you on a tax increase because we got to balance it. That's how you do the thing. I've had to do this lots of times in the corporate sector because corporate tells you they want X dollars of profit. Well, you got to do two things. Increase sales price, increase volume, or cut expenses to make it come out to what they want. Same scenario happens in county government. The very same thing by doing these two types of mechanisms. That's how it happens. Okay, next screen, Hannah. Well, 2008, we had a ninety-seven cent property valuation, tax rate on the property. That was five hundred and eighty million dollars. And these are fictitious numbers right here, but to show you an example, only five hundred and eighty million dollars worth of valuation. We generate five million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Well, tax neutral does this. You go get your property reevaluated. You still got to generate five million, six hundred and twenty-six thousand. So what do you do? You work in the reverse. You got this. This is your new property tax valuation at nine hundred and twenty-five million. So you come up, this is the tax that I must have on this new valuation to generate the same amount of money. Okay? Well, what did we do? We went to sixty-four cents. Property stays the same. It generates more money, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. Five point two six percent tax increase. Largest tax increase Gates County had had, period. Now, this is good for one thing, and then others it's not. Just depends on how you want to approach it. As you, the taxpayer, a person sitting up here. Let's see if I can see this bottom. On the bottom part of the screen, that's what that's doing. So you take sixty-four cents minus the sixty point eight, you come up with three point two increase divided by the sixty point five, and you get five point two six percent. So that's what happened. Next screen, Hannah. All right, this is off the North Carolina State website, treasurer's website, showing the fund balance available. This is the money that you can have to pay above the required minimum that the state requires you to have. Look at the numbers. We took a dip, but look at this increase, steadily increasing over our fund, in our fund balance. So what does that tell you? Next screen. This is our revenue stream. Property tax is forty-eight percent, and the governmental twenty-three, and a different thing. I'm not going to bore you with that. You can go right to the North Carolina's treasurer's site and see these numbers. Next screen. These are our expenditure tools. School debt, capital, which is the gem, salaries, wages, operating expenses, and capital highlights. Okay, next thing. All right, did anybody read this? This was in the Gates County index, headlines by Mr. Brown. And this is good. County's fund balance grows by five hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. That's not all. Next one. All right, this is out of the article. The county's total governmental funds reported a combined ending fund balance of three point eight six million dollars. That marked an increase of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-three from 2010. The fund balance for the general fund is three point four million dollars, an increase of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty over the previous fiscal year. The county's available fund balance, now this is what you can spend above what you're required to have, two point six million dollars. The percentage of fund balance first, the overall budget is twenty-six percent. State statutes require you have a minimum of eight. The county is still with a sixty-four cent tax rate that was initially lowered in 2009, and it came down now because what that's saying is ninety-seven cents versus sixty-four. Didn't really come down. Operates with a total budget of a shade over thirteen million, of which ten point five nine million is related to the general fund. Okay? This, remember this now too. When you had your property tax valuation assessed, what do you think that does if you go visit your banker? It makes your property seem like it's worth a lot more. You can borrow more money. Twenty percent of ten million dollars versus twenty percent of five million dollars, you can borrow more money. Why? Your property's worth more supposedly. Anybody know what happened after the valuation to your property? Did it go down? Yeah, go try to sell it today for what it's valued at. All right, this is off the state treasurer's site too. In 2008, we had one point nine available. Two oh nine, two point three, increase of the four hundred and twenty million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. 2010, two point four million, increase of sixty-three thousand. Okay, so remember the graph going up. Next slide. Now, this is what was, came into audit. So we've got four twenty, sixty-three, and this last year, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand. That's how much is going up. Fund balance, higher taxes, fund balance going up. Now, this is how it gets to the heart of it. This is our long-term debt. And Sandy, I didn't see, I got this from Sandy, the one that's retiring in 2012. What is that? I didn't see this on here.
The school refinancing debt is not on here?
Well, it might be. It might be inside this, but I didn't see it. But anyhow, these are our debts.
It was included in what I sent you.
All right. What happened here, when I looked at these, you can see the USDA, and this is what I was focused on. Fifteen, thirty years, thirty years, et cetera. Well, I don't like thirty-year loans. They're great depending on if you can take your money and put it in something, and you can invest it and earn more than you're paying. It's not too good though if you're not. Well, we got a problem with that. Four point two five percent. So what really, this is the DSS building here, one million, four and two of these, and I got them summed down here, which equals one million, eight hundred and ninety-four thousand. Okay, next screen. All right, this is a note that I got from Toby. Immediately after we did this, this came out. It says on the bottom, "Due to anemic growth that we have experienced in our NCCMT investments, I have moved one million dollars from the fund and placed same in the Southern Bank central depository checking account as today. If there are any questions, please call." Well, my question was, what is the current and average yield, yearly yield? Sandy sent that back to me. The average yield over the last six months for the NCCMT account has been point oh nine percent. And for the Southern Bank account, point six nine percent. So ladies and gentlemen, we got two point six million dollars, and we're earning less than one percent, and we're paying four point five. Does that make sense? I mean, not to me. Next screen. Well, back up a couple, Hannah. Back up a couple of screens. Hit the back button, or the arrow to the left. One more time. And this really got me excited. Register of deeds equipped with BB and T, we borrowed thirty thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars for five years at three point seven four percent, and we got two plus million dollars in the bank. Would you do that? Would you go to the car place, and you had two million dollars in your pocket, and there's a car that costs thirty-five thousand dollars sitting on the lot? And he says, well, I'll let you have it, and I will charge you three point seven four percent. What would you do?
Like I do, pay cash.
I mean, this don't make sense. Absolutely no sense at all. Okay, move forward. All right, on this is an amortization schedule that I wrote back in the late eighties. And basically, it is your payments and calculates that. You can put extra payments in and choose, and even had some tax stuff when we were in the, of course, the government's not into tax savings business. So this one million, eight hundred and eighty, ninety-four, whatever, total for the DSS at four point two five at thirty years is going to cost us one million, four hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars worth of interest. That's what it costs. So what can we do about that? Yeah, we can refinance, and we talked to JP about that. And we talked to JP about that. And, but there's always a way to do it without refinancing it. Next screen, Henry. So if we paid five hundred thousand dollars today, and it would be more than this because the payments only due in September first or something like that. We would save six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. Four hundred and fifty thousand paid today, saved six hundred and forty-eight thousand. Four hundred today, five ninety-six. And right on down to fifty thousand payment today would be greater than ninety-six thousand dollars saved. I don't want to mislead you a little bit because if we paid five hundred thousand dollars a day. You saw the screen about less than one percent, well, we'd earn five thousand dollars. And we'd earn a little bit more going forward. But which do you think would be greater? Anybody care to guess? Way over here. For exceeding that. This is about saving money and being wise with what you do. And this is taxpayer money. Okay. Next screen, Henry. Open up that, in that same folder, the one that says amortization. Now, shut that down. Yeah, hit on that, on the Excel file. Double click that. All right. Well, we can see it here, but, okay. I want to see. Move the screen over just a little bit, Henry, so that we start seeing from here to there. Move your arrow. No, it's to the right, move the arrow to the right. Come on over. Hold right there. All right. Remember the ninety-six on the screen? That was for the fifty thousand dollar payment. So Henry, I want you to come right here. This is Janu-, September the first of two thousand and twelve. No, 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 take that, put it back over. Bring it back over, set the fifties over here. One more time. Oh, I want you to go click on that number and change that to five hundred thousand dollars. Hit Emma. This extra payment, that's your six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. So now we can do lots of things here that we can be innovative. All right, go back and change it to fifty, Henry. Okay, hit Emma. Now go, go back on, on that screen. Click back on that. Grab this little box over here on the left-hand side. Take your mouse and pull it down. Hold, hold right there. Okay. Hundred thousand, we're going to save one hundred and seventy-nine. That's just making a fifty thousand dollar payment this year, fifty next year. Above what we're required to do. Bring it down one more time, Henry. Three payments, over a quarter of a million dollars saved. By just making three payments above what we're required to pay. One more time, Henry. Okay. Three hundred and thirteen thousand. Saved in this full year, four payments, two hundred thousand, and we saved three hundred and thirteen. In the last month or so, we spent a hundred, twenty-five, thirty-five, just like that. We got two point six million dollars, folks. What do you think's the smart thing to do? Anybody have any idea what would you do? If this was you?
I'd like to ask you a question on that. Do you have the numbers for the total dollar value that the county owes at the full plus some percent interest versus what it would be at two percent for the same period of time?
Oh, yeah, I can calculate that real easy.
Because e- even if you did that, you still kept your fund balance at the same thing.
So what do you want to?
Still save a large sum of money, would you not?
You want me to refinance this right now?
I'd like to see that.
All right, move it to the right. Take them out, Henry. Yeah, take all those payments out. Now, just hit the delete button, it'll come out. Yeah, okay. All right, now slide it back over to the left. All right, right here, let's see, we owe right now about one million. I want you to change this to one, what we owe now roughly say, one million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. No, one million, seven forty-seven. I want, yes, sir, change it. Seven, four, seven. And go ahead and put the actual number, five hundred and some thousand, five hundred and some dollars. Five hundred's good. All right, now change this to point zero. What, what'd you say, Mr. Bazemore? How much?
You were sure when it was some percent on, on the.
All right, so you want to put it on the box?
Between two percent that you can get money after day.
All right, two percent. Point zero two, Henry. How lo-, how much longer now we got, okay? We've been paying about four years, so let's change this to twenty-six years. So we're going to pay it off at the same time. Twenty-six. Okay, hit Emma, Henry, and move it over there and let's see what we got. Slide over to the. Nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
That's on one loan.
That's taking the current balance, what we owe, refinancing it two percent for twenty-six years.
Now, my next question is why go on for somebody to think about it?
Well, I don't know. I've been thinking about it a long time. I don't have any control, I'm only one person up here, but I can tell you this, I do monitor the charts and just like the comment was made to me back when I was running. Think of this as your personal savings account. Well, I love savings, but I believe in doing something smart and wise with it. I do mine like that. Like I said, when I, back, this was nineteen seventy-seven. My father, which didn't have a, he didn't have a college degree. He just did get out of high school. I went and bought a new nineteen seventy-seven Phoenix Pontiac. I borrowed the money for three years. And my dad asked me that, he says, how long did you borrow the money? And I told him, he said, well, I'll tell you what. I want you to take and pay that car for six years. And the next time you go to buy a car, you won't have to borrow as much money. It's all about discipline and being wise and thoughtful about what you're doing. So this is to show you, when you got money, you need to use it, but you need to use it wisely. Just like you.
Can I add one more comment to that?
Yes, sir.
I can understand where you're coming from, John, and I think you're doing a very good job. But also I realize that our fund balance, that there's a certain amount of grants that we are receiving.
That's correct.
That we have to produce county funds to pay out before we receive the grant funds.
That's correct.
And so I can see that where you do need a good hefty fund balance.
That's correct.
This part right here looks to me as though that's a no-brainer because you still keep your fund balance.
Well, we got.
Save a lot of money.
Well, I got my fund balance at my eight percent that I'm required, and then I got a bonus of two point six million. So.
I would not feel comfortable at eight percent for.
No, I wouldn't either, but that's what I got to have. But remember, are we going to reduce your taxes? You saw the graph, it's constantly going up. Now, it's true, I mean, things can happen and you need to be prepared for that. JP said you could go back and refinance capital debt. That's the way you can get money when you fall into trouble. You can't just go borrow money, but you can capitalize things against that. So there is an opportunity here. Now, he mentioned somebody down with Hurricane Isabel that got in trouble where they spent, he said, four million dollars. Now, I'm not advocating doing anything like that. I'm not saying go pay it off. I'm not thinking about doing that. We do need to step up our payments and save you the taxpayer some money. So that's what this is all about. Now, we're getting ready to venture on borrowing more money. Well, one point five million dollars, now we did do something halfway smart. We did take the five years at one seven seven rather than taking the fifteen that was proposed. That's smart. Now, if you don't have the money, it's different, but you got the money. And I can get money from you anytime I want to by raising your taxes. All I got to do is justify. Well, it's easier to, there's several ways to justify it, as I told you in the front screens of how you would manage and budget. I played those games for thirty-five years, I know about them. And they are games, they are counting games. They're realistic, but they can be a game. It just depends on your motivation. So this is all about our debt and where we're at and what we need to be doing. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion. I'd like to hear my colleagues in the same their thoughts and objections on whether we need to save the county any money or continue status quo.
Well, Johnny, I certainly think we ought to try to save the county money. I think refinancing is a, is a great opportunity we have. And, and I certainly believe and hope that our county management finance director will look at all opportunities to do that. So, you know, I think that's something that we certainly ought to consider. And I certainly would be one that would, would follow up towards seeing that happen wherever the opportunity presents itself.
Um, well, good thing about this, Henry, on this particular case, we don't have to go refinance, we don't have to do anything. We just cut a check. Now, it does make it more interesting what Mr. Bazemore said, if we can do that, that would be terrific. Because that would, in fact, if you didn't have origination fees or discount fees you had to play against that, you would be saving money. As you can see, if you can't get a lower rate than what the four point two five it is, a considerable savings. But the example is on the screen, you don't have to do nothing. Absolutely nothing except write the check. Well, we just wrote or approved, I know, a twenty-five thousand, a thirty-five thousand, and a hundred and ninety-six thousand. So it's a stroke of the pen. So I'd, I'd like to see us, whatever you guys feel comfortable with, making a pledge today to reduce our debt. Now, if you want a half a million dollars, I think that's very workable. Matter of fact, what I'd like to see, I'd like, Toby, I'd like for you to get me a twelve-month cash flow. Monthly cash flow for twelve months. The next, a cash flow projection for the next twelve months on what our cash flow is. And, but today, since, and that, and that, it is more money than what you saw on the screen because the next payment is not due until September. This is January, that's eight months savings above this. That's not even reflected on the screen. So it is more money. So I'd like to see us today take a number out of fund balance and pay on this debt. You choose a number. I'd like to see a half a million, but I'm not going to hold that to anybody. But I'd like to see you make a motion or someone up here that would like to be proactive and innovative enough to take and pay some debt and save the county some money. Now, who wants to do that?
Would you like to have, any little commissioner comment or were you?
Yeah. Okay. I want you to.
Kenny, would you like to comment?
Well, I certainly am one that likes to see money saved also. In my own personal home pay, house payment, I paid over my amount, paid it off early. Save a little bit of tax, save a little bit of money for my self-interest. So, so I, so I'm not against that at all. And I'll tell you right now, I paid off my last payment last week. On my house.
Congratulations.
On my house. And I'm tickled to death. I found out for thirty and I paid it off in twenty-six. So it's, it's money saved.
Jack?
Well, when Johnny emailed Sandy and asked for those numbers, about thirty minutes after he sent her the email. I sent an email and replied to everybody and said that I was in favor of refinancing. So I did that right away, as soon as I saw Johnny's idea and his request, rather. And so I'm in favor of that. If you look back at the video, the minutes of that day, I questioned JP myself on that. So I already had some interest in that. And then when Johnny stepped up to the plate with that email, I let him know by replying to all that I was in favor of it. I do want to say that in looking at the numbers, when you see the six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars savings up there. The reason that number is so big is because you're looking at a thirty-year mortgage. And when those mortgages are set up, the county, I don't know all of the history on the county, but when those mortgages are set up, they're really not intended to be thirty, to be carried for thirty years. They're intended to be less. So I don't, I don't want the people to think that we're going to save six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. That savings is only there if we went the full thirty years on the loan. So, but there is savings to be had. What I see is if, if we refinance this debt and keeping in mind that we recently through BB and T, we got one point seven seven. If we can get anywhere close to that on these, I'm certainly in favor of refinancing. And, and I would be willing to make a motion that I'm in favor of reducing some of our debt through using the fund balance. But doing it in a conservative, in a conservative manner, so that we don't get ourselves in a Isabel or, you know, it doesn't have to be that. I mean, we could have a hurricane that hits a, you know, that hits us and causes us to have to do some things. There's also FEMA out there, you know, that, that backs us up on that. So, but I, those, those would be my biggest concerns. Again, if the dollar number was right, I would be willing to second a motion or make a motion if the, if the dollar amount was fair.
Henry?
Yes. I think what we need to do is we need to give the charge to the county manager and the finance director to let them do the research on what the opportunities are for refinances. What are the potential repercussions of using X number of dollars from the fund balance? Bring that back and let's move forward with it. I don't think we need to circumvent the process that we put in place. We have a county manager and a finance director who works for the county, who is supposed to have the expertise to look into these things. And not just to haphazardly invoke a requirement on them when we haven't had an opportunity to allow them to present something to us. So I, I'm in agreement with refinancing, I'm in agreement with using fund balance, but certainly I want to make sure that I give our people the opportunity to look at it. And, and, and make sure that we know what all the potential repercussions are in moving forward. And I certainly, I think we ought to use the process. We've got it in place, we need to use it the way it's set up. But again, I'm for reducing our debt and saving money.
Okay. I've, I've got a couple of mixed feelings on this. I agree with the refinancing, I think that's a very smart thing to do to look at. I'm concerned about using. I'm concerned about using fund balance. When I took office in 2008, we had just come from a point where we spent our fund balance down to nothing. And it took a while to build it back up to be safe from the government coming in and taking over. Chauan County had a $20 million fund balance. Then the government was ready to come in there and take over because they started writing checks completely out of their fund balance and not watching what was going on. I'm not comfortable spending money out of fund balance too quickly. Fund balance is something that we look forward. As a commissioner, myself, I look forward past tomorrow, to the next day, to the next year, to the next generation. And I feel like keeping a certain fund balance is something we need to look forward to because there's no way we can grow our county and work on an 8% fund balance or 10% fund balance and not have money in case we need it. I believe refinancing is a smart thing to do at these times. If you looked at the chart that Johnny had up there, if you'll notice in 2007, 2008, our fund balance, the black line was way at the bottom. That's where I'm talking about we started at, at the bottom. We had to get to where we are today and took some tough decisions. Chauan County has brought theirself up from a very tough place where they lost, they spent over $20 million that they had in fund balance doing things that they felt like they needed to do until it was all gone. And I'm not comfortable with spending all the money that's set aside to grow our county with. Far as refinancing, I think that's a very smart thing to do. If we can get a favorable interest rate, 1.7 seems to be a very good number that we're working with the library, it's a good thing to do. And this DSS, I'm not sure about that. I do know one of the loans that we're talking about was refinanced because the county was getting in trouble and not be able to make the payments at some point in time. So they refinanced it several years ago and added several months to it. This was several years back before we were, none of us were on this table. But they did refinance it at one point to try to get a better interest rate and cut payments down. They put it into a 30-year note, I believe, and I don't remember which one it was. The school loan, one of them, that was refinanced once or twice. And we're still paying the payment on, because it was refinanced and moved forward to keep the payments lower. A lot of people do refinancing to bring their payments down, but in the long run, they kill themselves because the interest rates don't change that much. I think it's a smart thing to do. I think the county manager and our finance director, we should look at each individual loan and the largest one's probably first to make a, to look at making some kind of refinancing. That's what I would do if it was me. I wouldn't arbitrarily just start writing checks until I'd done a whole lot of research. Because like Johnny said, we are spending somebody else's money and we're also trying to look at our future in Gates County. We can spend all the money for tomorrow and not have a future, but we've got to think about that too. And that's what I do as a commissioner, is think about that a lot, about tomorrow, past tomorrow, and into the next generation. And in the past, sometimes that's not thought about, is what you can do today and what you can save today. But you've still got to think about it as a commissioner, what you have in 20 years. A lot of that hadn't been thought about in the past, and I think it's time to start thinking about it. I'm one that's gonna think about it. But I do believe that the county manager ought to look at these, though, these interest rates and see on some of these, and see if we can do something with them. There's a lot more than just arbitrarily going out there and doing it. It takes a lot more research than a few minutes because there's a whole lot more involved in changing money around and moving money around. One of the things that they actually did was take money out of a fund that we had, when we put that money in the fund, it was making more money there than it was in a savings account. When it became it was less, we moved it back. That was a smart thing to do. That's why it was done. It wasn't, I mean, that's what was looked at. We're not making this much money now, let's move it back to where it was making more money. I mean, it happened and that's why it was there to start with. At that time, it was making more money. That's why it was moved there. Matter of fact, it's been moved twice, I believe, back and forth, watching the interest rates. Our finance director looks at that on a regular basis. But the money's still got to be available in case we need it. So I think, and I believe that the consensus of the county, the commissioners is that we look at a refinancing of some of our loans.
The only problem with the free finance is because the bank is looking for money most of the time when you rewrite a loan. And that's good if you, and you do have to run the numbers to find out whether that's feasible or not with the discount fee or origination fee that they charge you. But you take in the current loan, don't take any brain power. You just write the check. As Kenny just said, he made additional payments. Because you make the additional payments upfront reduces your overall capital because you're devoting that 100% devoted towards principal. That's a no-brainer from that standpoint. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out. Now, refinancing, if you can get a better rate, yeah, but you gotta look at the discount part of it, too. But this is nothing more than making an extra payment. Well, what, I mean, $50,000 payment today saves $96,000. Do you think we can afford $50,000 today? Anybody? How about $100? I mean, we stroked a pin just like that a month ago. Didn't think twice. Made the adjustment moment. $100,000.
I take offense at that not thinking twice, Johnny. There's been a lot of thoughts going on about this. I really take offense of that. There's a whole lot of thoughts going on this. You may not fault about it, but I am. And I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I think that was my problem. I thought about it too much.
Okay. I'm sorry about it.
So, like I said, you don't have to refinance anything. You just make a payment.
I think it's time to move on.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we spend $100,000 towards this DSS loan within the next month and then approach it from another 100 going down. But today, commit to making at least a $100,000 payment against this loan.
I've got one other observation on that. You know, we can make a lump sum $100,000 payment and we can realize some savings. But at the same time, if we don't put something in place as well, you know, I've saved, out of paying this $100,000, I've saved, let's say $40,000. Well, if we don't put cap on spending, you know, all of a sudden now I've got $40,000 I can spend somewhere else. It's gotta be, if I'm gonna save, it's a totality that you're looking at. If we're gonna make extra payments, it also ought to be reflected in how we're gonna spend. Because if I pay out $100,000 and all of a sudden, you know, I go and spend some more money, I'm really not accomplishing a lot. I think that we need to allow the county manager and finance director to look at the options. That's okay if we put $100,000, make a $100,000 payment. I wanna see what kind of parameters are gonna be around it, what are gonna, what's gonna be the effect in spending that $100,000 as well as looking at refinancing. You know, if you come back, if the recommendation is that commissioners, we can pay $100,000 and we don't anticipate any future uses of the money for other purposes or, you know, those types of things. I feel more comfortable with doing that, but just to say I'm gonna take $100,000 right now, I wouldn't wanna do that until we get the research done.
Henry, let me expand on just your comments just one minute. You just saw that the net available fund balance grew by $277,000 in our audit. And that's, and 100 out of that. So let's think about this a minute. You got two choices. Do you just keep padding our pockets in our spending account or do we let our citizens through the reduction in our tax rate who are struggling and suffering to let them save their money?
What was not reflected in that, Johnny, was Colleen on childcare support. We got some lump sum money this year. And I think much of, some of that money is reflected in the fund balance.
That's correct.
Do you recall what the figure?
75, one hundred seventy-five. That's what our net number was.
We went back and got two prior years of child support revenue that we were able to withhold from the federal.
That's right.
About 43 per year. And that runs out. We will not realize that next year.
That's right.
A one-time, two-year in a row opportunity that we had to go back two years to raise some revenue.
And that's why we had our excess 75.
Do you recall what that was? What we realized? I mean, let's say $75,000. So what I'm getting to is there's been other monies coming in as well. And we've gotta take all of that into account. I think it's a great idea of moving forward to reduce this, but I just think we just, we don't need to just jump right into it too quickly and just, you know, lay down a moratorium of direction and saying, hey, this is what you're gonna do without doing the research and forethought that we need to do.
Fair.
Can I make a comment about paying on the DSS loan now or after being, it doesn't make any difference to me. But we've gotta be careful if you make a payment on the DSS loan, we may not get the revenue back on it that we would if we paid over time because it's still within the cost plan. It's dependent upon all of our allocations, where they're tapped, at what point we are in spending. So we don't, we don't wanna pay it thinking we're gonna get our 50% to 60% back on that payment when we will exhaust our other federal allocations and then end up spending county money on programs.
Yeah, that's the point. We gotta look at the variables.
I think that might be what Commissioner Jordan is saying, is that they're moving parts of this thing, that things that aren't necessarily apparent, like what Colleen just brought up, that need to be hashed out and make sure are gonna realize the amount of savings that have been presented. I think it's a great thing to refinance it. It may even be a great thing to pay it down in some lump sum, but to pull out an arbitrary number sitting at this table is probably not in the county's best interest.
So, Colleen, are you telling me that our revenue stream reimbursement from Fed and state is based on our debt?
It's based on our expenditures. And if you, it's based on expenditures in general. So we get, for example, if we get $80,000 in social services block grant money, and we spread that out across throughout the year in terms of staff time and things of that nature, and the cost of building and the cost of paper and the cost of pens and the ink and all that stuff. And when it's gone, we go 100% all county on those types of related expenses. We only get what the feds give us for SSBG, what they give us for TANF, what they give us for childcare and whatnot. So once, so if we add another $100,000 in expenditure for a DSS program, it's gonna be cost allocated, it's gonna cap out.
But this is against the capital. But this is against the capital.
But the capital are expenditures, is what she's saying. It goes into the indirect cost plan.
It's expenditure that draws down a portion of our revenue stream.
So, which is, which, and I remember when we talked about financing this building, we discussed the benefit between 40 years and 30 years. There were people at the state level that recommended a 40-year loan and the county manager was like, we're not doing the 40-year loan. So we went with, and we talked about a 20-year loan. That would have capped our allocations to the cost. The payment being too high will reduce the availability of federal revenue streams that we have for operations. So there was some definite thought put into place for the length of that loan. I can't predict any of the other debt that we have. The that loan was set at an affordable rate that we would not cap our state and federal revenue streams to the point where we ended up all county by March of every year.
Can you capture those numbers for me?
I can grab.
Okay, how am I doing that?
It does sound like we, it does sound like we need to do a little more research on this and let our finance department do a little research on this.
Yeah, I don't wanna do anything that would hinder us that our revenue stream would decline. However, I think you can still look and see the magnitude of the savings probably will fall outweigh any revenue stream. There's no question in my mind. I can just about point-blank tell you that, but...
All right. Was there any motion on floor?
No, I'll, based on what Colleen said, because I, you know, that's something I'm not 100% aware of and let her do the research and I look at those numbers and then I'll come back.
I think, Mr. Chairman, that we should have the county manager and finance director to address these issues and bring them back to us. Hopefully, if you could do it by our mid-month meeting. I know this is a little short time.
It'd probably be the February meeting because we're gonna need to get some approximate quotes from some banks to get some ideas to put the numbers together. But we'll make every effort to have it at the night meeting, but most likely the February meeting.
And look at the potential opportunities for pay down of what repercussions surround any payouts and that sort of thing.
The thing is that during the course of this year, and I don't have my report in front of me, but I believe that you all have already approved the appropriation of maybe $300,000 of that fund balance that Mr. Horace referring to. And I don't have a report in front of me, but if you look at your revenue reports, I believe the fund balance appropriated for this year of money that you approved pulling out of fund balance to pay for different contracts and grant matches and so on, I believe that's already exceeded $300,000 and that's, I'd have to go back and check that. But that's another thing to consider is that, you know, we've already gone into the fund balance this year for quite a bit of money, so that's another thing to think about.
So that would be a good reason to let y'all do the research that y'all are working with on that.
All right, that's why I'd like to see this 12, I'd like to see that 12-month cash flow projection, a monthly cash flow projection for the next 12 months.
He withdrawed his motion.
Based on that comment that I, Colleen, because I would like to do a little...
All right, let's move forward, Ken. We need to go into our public hearing for the library financing issue. Do I have a motion in the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in a public hearing for the financing of the library. We entertain public comments. We had, in the past, had already moved forward on looking at the loan for 1.77% with BB and T to, for a five-year term that we pay back in five years to build a new library with. At this point, we'll entertain any public comment on this loan itself. Ed?
Again, thank you for taking the comment and question, but I, we're just sitting here and I noticed a comment that came up. The gentleman here said we ought to cap our spending. I think that's a remarkable comment, that we should cap our spending. Now we're sitting here talking about spending 1.5 million, okay? So which way is it? Are we gonna cap our spending or are we going to spend a million and a half? Thank you.
All right, Dan? Morning, Dan.
My name is Dan Bazemore and I'm from the Hall Township. And I have heard a number of comments that has been made, and a number of them are very good. And I think that this is what the people of the county like to hear, the good comments. We don't like bad news. Most people don't. But bad news is what sells. If you don't believe it, pick up a newspaper. If it won't put the bad news in it, it probably wouldn't even sell. So here we are, talking about $1.5 million. I think, you gentlemen, if you go in a closed work session, get this information together that has been proposed by some of these people that are sitting on the board, and gather your information and do all the fact-finding and the what else, what is good, what is bad, and your problem-solving concept, and look at how much good outweighs the bad. And the good, like I say, is what people want to hear out here, that it's the taxpayers paying the funds. Now, it looks to me like that there's enough money that can really be saved through refinancing that would pay the payment on a loan for a library. It would probably pay more than the total 1.5 million if my computer in my head was working right when they give the presentation. Because the example was only on one loan of 1.7 million dollars. And hundreds of thousands of dollars it would save. Now, if you've got four or five of those loans and you save the hundreds of thousands of dollars in the tune of a half a million or better, and it does not affect other things and operations within the county, then you have just come up with something good. You've come up with a way to pay for your library, to get your library. But I think the main question is for most of the people and maybe even this survey that went around, for the petition that went around to abate the library. Is one point five too much for a library in Gates County? Is the question people ask me. Well, you got to pay for what you get. So if you make a, a larger home, you're gonna have to pay more money than you do for a smaller one. There are some people that say that you should spend about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the library, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to take and furnish it. Take the other five hundred thousand dollars and not even use it. And later on, as the population grows, in Mr. Jordan's district over there, of Sunbury and Core Peak, that you build another small library over there. And then you're better serving the people of the county because they don't have to commute as far to get to a library. And so I'm gonna leave, you people are gonna make the decision whether we approve one point five million dollars or not. But I ask you to search your conscience and saying, is this exactly what you feel as though the majority, this six hundred and some people, which outweighed that seventy-five or eighty that showed up? Is this what the majority of the people want in Gates County? So you are the one that's gonna make the decision on that. You are the one that's gonna make the decision on the approval or disapproval of one point five million dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay?
My name is Carolyn Riddick and I live in York. I don't have much, as much as a comment on it as I do as a question. I wasn't able to attend the last couple of meetings for reasons that it's not important. My question is, why is it we find it so important for something as small as a drop-off box that we could manage to put a survey into every resident's water bill to be voted on? Yet, it's like a soap opera. We keep coming to this meeting and it's all back to the library. And I think everyone is on agreement that something needs to be done considering the library. It really does. But it's like we don't have an option. We have a right to vote on the meet, uh, box, but it's not up to us to have a vote on whether or not we approve of the new library or the price we wanna spend in it. It's like it's being shoved on us no matter what, but yet something simple as a drop-off box, you get the right to vote on that. Something is mixed up with the way things are decided here in this county. And I don't understand it, maybe I never will, and I think it's already been decided no matter how much is gonna be spent on this library, where it's gonna be put, how big it's gonna be, it don't matter. We don't have a say. But you can decide whether you get a drop-off box for your water bill. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any more comments? Earl?
Earl Roundtree. You know, one of the great things about history is the Gettysburg Address. And, uh, what was the orator, a great orator spoke for like three hours at Gettysburg and nobody remembers his name. Abraham Lincoln picked up a piece of paper off the floor and wrote a few notes and it became great history. I didn't come here today with any notes, but this discussion went on and on, so I got the Gettysburg Address out here and I don't know if I can follow. I don't usually say things like this, but I'm gonna say this for public record, for the benefit of the camera, and so to be public record. Graham, this is to you and Kenny Jernikin. And if I say something you don't agree with, certainly please correct me. But I, it has been on my conscience, and I'm the person that usually got guts enough or have a reputation in this county to tell you exactly where I stand and exactly where I feel. And I don't want to die with that reputation not intact. But before we voted on the library, I talked to Graham. I talked to Graham right much. I've been, you know, we're friends. I don't mind admitting that. We're family. I can't get him to listen to me a lot of times maybe, but we talk. Kenny Jernikin, same way. I talked to Graham. I said, Graham, you know, I'm not against the library. I think we need a library. I said, but we're talking about numbers too big, one point seven at the time. And Graham, I can say under oath, take a polygraph test, that you told me I think we can build a library for a million dollars.
That's what I told you.
Thank you for being completely honest. I talked to Kenny and I threw the million-dollar thing out to him. And I can say under oath that Kenny told me I think the million dollars is a, sound like a pretty good figure, but I think we need some wiggling room. I said, well, a little wiggling room, one point one, one point two. I came into this building with a full expectation based on what I had heard from these two commissioners, that a motion was gonna be made to build a library for one point two million dollars, and it came right up and the motion was immediately made for one point five million dollars. And I do not take this lightly. I think it's an insult to me and to the county for them to tell me one thing on Monday and another thing on Wednesday. I want to say that I personally want to thank Mr. Hor for going to the trouble to come up with these figures. Now he has been under a lot of, uh, attacks from people in the county. But as I told Wade Askew several times, I said, Wade, get over it. Johnny won. You know, that's what we vote about. My man for governor lost the last time and I hope to God he wins this time. Uh, my man lost for president and we're gonna have a new man to run. And I hope that he beats Obama. If he don't, this country is gone. But that doesn't have anything to do with the county, but it has to do with the fact that I believe that government should be open, we should look at all these options. Now it was brought up to here by you commissioners up here in my little notes. They said, well, let's let, uh, Toby and, uh, the finance officer look at these things. Well, that's good, but nobody had looked at them until Johnny came up with them. Now I know some of y'all are gonna be mad at me saying this, but I don't care because I feel like it's the truth. Now the problem is, and I'm gonna say this, this is a public meeting. You know, all of you need to work together. I came in here and said this before. And if we're gonna come up about these re-financing figures, I think the people in Gates County would like to see everybody included. And I think that Mr. Hor should be sitting down with the county finance officer and the county manager in a friendly, working atmosphere. Because Mr. Hor that came up with these figures and instead of having been in some type of fight, they need to be working together. And as a taxpayer, I'm kinda tired of this inner fighting on the board, but it's politics. But at the same time, I would think that. One thing, got to turn to another thing here. You know, one thing that I, I know that I'm different. I admit that. Renee McGinnis and I have got an own corn joke about me being different. But I am a conservative. I don't like to waste my money. I don't like to see the taxpayers' money wasted. But you know, a funny thing about this today, all the things that I heard about fund balance, Johnny's figures about the revenue going up, a key word that never came up to date with me, and this is Earl Roundtree's thinking, did anyone see anything about, well, let's cut taxes? No. Y'all are being true politicians. The greatest thing that's ever been said about politics is a thousand of them, but one of them is that the government that robs Peter to pay Paul can always count on the support of Paul. And what y'all are interested in doing, based on what I've heard here today, is trying to, on the one hand, is save money, and then on the other hand, is figure out how to spend the money that you save. Now I'd like to see some of that money come back to me and, and, and to say, okay, we got too much revenue. I know that's not gonna happen, uh, but that's the way it should be. Last year, I keep forgetting when it's New Year. Last year, Dominion Power, which I own stock in to help feed the babies, uh, had to give a refund back because it's a regulated utility. And so it's constantly, they have to go to get the rates changed, so they had, they had to send and give us a refund back. Well, I didn't like that as a stockholder, but anyway, I liked it as a customer. Well now, the New Year's come in, Dominion Power's gone to the utility commission and says we need a fuel adjustment. So now we've got to raise it back up, you know, and this is the way that things go. Uh, you adjust. Chorone County was brought up. Uh, I hadn't owned property in Chorone County, so I pay taxes and I know about Chorone County. I enjoyed the low tax rate, Graham. I didn't know like everybody else that they were spending two, uh, twenty-three million dollars of money that they shouldn't be spending. Uh, and I was enjoying that. And I'd even decided to give my vehicles and my boat and everything to my son because I could save taxes by having it registered in Chorone County. Uh, next thing I know, my, I got, they had to raise emergencies, my funds, and I got the bills. I mean, you know, I know what was going on down there. Uh, but, uh, we need to keep a close eye on this thing. Smoking mirrors is always part of politics. It is the true thing. In Washington, in Raleigh, everybody's always trying to make something look like it doesn't look. It's called smoking mirrors. And we need to look at this thing. What I came up here to say about today, before I get so I can't talk at all, is this. I don't understand, we knew that we were gonna build a library. We've already voted on that. Uh, and I guess we'd already voted on what I understood, Henry, because I made a comment that I like the one point seven seven in the short term. I didn't want any more of these thirty, forty-year loans. I don't have them myself. I've never had them, but that's me. But I like what we did have and thought it was sort of a done deal. But we have always ended up putting out here, you want credibility, you want the public to trust this board. Why did we have that call meeting? A call meeting to send this stuff to the treasurer when we could've had the public hearing today, done it properly, had the public hearing and then voted on it, sent it to Raleigh? Why did we have to have a call meeting to do that?
It was date deadlines that we didn't realize at that point in time.
Okay, I heard that story, so I went to the state treasurer website and also, uh, I looked at this thing and they got meetings all year round. I mean, they have the executive meeting, which the executive committee can approve this. It doesn't have to go through the full commission, but it's probably going to the full commission. So I heard this, that we got to have a special meeting to approve this. They got meetings every month. So is one month gonna make a big difference? I don't see that it was. I don't know why, what y'all think about it. If you want to get the public to trust the commissioners and the government, you need to think about what you're doing and not constantly keep putting this horse out here behind the cart. The horse is supposed to pull the cart. You ever try to get a horse to push a cart? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more? If not, we'll, uh, entertain a motion and close public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. All right. Next on the agenda, Renee? Oh, Sandy, oh, we're gonna take a break here. Agenda is our, uh, CDGB capacity building budget ordinance.
The clear one? Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. I did email this to everybody and this is basically the budget for that CDVG capacity building grant. You all have already approved the contract with Mike Scott and everything else with this. This has just given me the authority to spend that money and draw it back down. And basically, it's a hundred thousand dollar grant. Ten percent of it will be spent for administration and the other ninety thousand will be for actually, um, actually be for the project.
You've got to have this ready before you receive the funds, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Any questions, gentlemen? If not, we'll entertain a motion, a motion to accept the, uh, the ordinance as presented.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that way, accept the grant project ordinance for the CDVG, uh, capacity building grant project.
All right, I got a motion. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Uh, next on the agenda, tax administrator, Mr. Renee McGinnis.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thanks for the heat. Feels much better. Before I go into the report, one thing I would like to do is thank you as the board of commissioners for our Christmas get-together this year. Um, it was very nice to have all the departments together and enjoy that time together. And I also want to thank Reba and maybe more her staff than Reba, I'm not sure, but they did a wonderful job and we appreciate y'all doing that for us. And you have a copy of the collector's report. Nothing really outstandingly different, other than needless to say, this time of year, more funds are coming in. Right now, we have started including the percentage back on the report. At the end of December, we were at seventy point seven percent, which is around three percent higher than we were last year at this time. Don't anticipate seeing that three percent higher come the end of June. I hope maybe what it means is that from an economic standpoint, our citizens here in the county are better off and maybe some back at work that didn't have jobs. But right now, we are a little ahead of schedule with the collections. One thing I did want to call your attention to is the funds that were received through Travis Ellis. This past month, we received a little over eleven thousand dollars. Ten thousand of that is attributed to one issue that we've been trying to take care of for some time. It's my understanding we'll have another ten thousand dollars coming to us this month, which pretty, is getting pretty close to taking care of that situation. Do y'all have any questions in reference to this? If not, the next thing I wanted to discuss with you, and I think I had emailed this and I think you also have the hard copy in front of you this morning, a resolution authorizing the extension of the two thousand and twelve listing period. Normally, our listing period is from January one to January thirty-one. We've had some issues with the printers this year and getting our abstracts here. We went with a different company because they were less expensive than who we had been dealing with and now maybe I figured out why. I'm not sure what the problem is, but anyway. They have told us they could probably put a rush order on them at this point, but that's gonna cost more. And by North Carolina statute, you can, in a non-reval year, extend the listing period for thirty days. So what this resolution, if you adopt it today, it would actually extend the listing period to the end of February, so the citizens will have time to get their listings in after, hopefully, we will be able to get them out during the month of January. Hope they get here.
Have you got them out yet? I think I've seen mine.
No, it hasn't, it hasn't come yet.
Generally, uh, the citizens have a thirty-day period to respond. Okay, and this, do you have any idea when the abstracts are gonna be ready?
Well, I had emailed him yesterday and was expecting a reply yesterday, but did not get one. I'm hoping I'll have one when I get back to the office. If not, I'll be getting back in touch with him.
Do you anticipate, uh, abstracts being ready prior to January thirty-first?
I certainly hope so.
Well, I guess where I'm, you know where I'm going with this.
We may be getting free abstracts.
Is February twenty-ninth is gonna be sufficient?
Well, we can only in a non-reval year by law extend it for thirty days, so we can't go beyond that. But I'm hoping to have those abstracts in my office at this point by at least the third week of January. And when they do get here, we will be ready to go ahead and get them printed and get them out. And we have actually, as far as those that have farm equipment to list and the business listing, personal property, those letters have already gone out. They went out before Christmas in reference to those. So what this is going to be is mostly people that have, you know, the boats, the ATVs, you know, that sort of thing.
All right, we've got this resolution authorizing the extension of the 2012 listing period. We have a motion to authorize this extension.
No move.
Got a second? Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign.
Thank you. The second thing that you had in front of you today was a list of the foreclosure properties that Gates County owns at this point. We have five of them. The last three on those lists were the foreclosure sales that we had. Kind of looks like this. Oh, I'm sorry, it's being passed down. I'm sorry. The last three on the list, they were the foreclosures that we had in December. So those have not actually been finalized, where the deeds have been recorded, that they're actually in the hands of Gates County right now, but that will happen this month. Also with this, you have a copy of a bid that we have received on one of those properties. It's the property on Tuggy Ull Road. And like I say, at this point, that property has not actually passed to Gates County. What I would suggest, if it's okay with the board, is that we put this on the agenda for the mid-month meeting, so that y'all can have time to look over this. And if you have any questions, you know, get in touch with me, and I'll be glad to answer them.
Y'all okay with that?
This is, this is an offer that's, that's been made. We've taken it to the courthouse steps.
We have taken, this was a piece of property that the county has ended up with from a foreclosure sale that was at the courthouse steps. Like I say, the deed has not been recorded as of yet. Things have not been finalized with that sale. So legally, at this point, you know, the paperwork's not in place, where the county is the actual owner of it. And of course, this bid does come in, you know, lower than what the bid at the courthouse steps was. And it's just up to you as a board, if you want to accept that bid or not. If you choose to accept that bid, we would have to go through the process that's given in General Statute 168, 269, where basically, it's pretty much the same thing as the bid process that we go through at the courthouse steps. It's just handled through the county, not the clerk's office.
So you're saying it would have to be, if we accepted this bid?
If you accept this bid, we would have to advertise this bid, and it could be upset within that 10-day period.
Okay.
Yes. But you don't have to accept the bid. That's up to you.
Well, your recommendation is that we put this off until what, to when?
The mid-January meeting. It's in a couple of weeks. That'll give y'all a little more time to think about it, and look at the information that you have in front of you.
The thing that concerns me is that, you know, we're trying to get rid of property. Someone's going to make an offer, you know? They don't say on here how long that offer's good for. You know, if we drag this thing out six months, you know, they may not be willing to give us $4,500 for it.
Well, that's up to you at this point, because you, you have been presented this bid, and you can either accept the bid or decline the bid. If you decline it, I just go back to the person and tell you, tell them that the board has declined the bid. If they want to submit another bid, that's up to them.
Well, I, I don't personally want, you know, to talk about declining, because we're not in a property accumulating or holding a business. But if we're going to hold it off to mid, uh, mid-January meeting, I think that just need to be relayed. We, we should be ready to make a decision. And I, and one of the things that I have certainly advocated is that we, we need to get rid of these properties. If we've got a reasonable bid, we need to get rid of them. The other thing is, is that we need to get these properties, they, they need to be notified that they are for sale. We, we need to get signs out.
And we are in the process of getting prices on signs. We tried to work locally. That didn't work very well. And so we have spoken with two other companies, and are waiting to get prices in on signs.
So, you know, I, I would say to the board, you know, let's, if this is the only bid we've got, we need to look seriously at, at considering taking what we've got, because you don't have anything else. And, and as Renee has just said, we'd have to go through the process of, if we even accepted a bid, we would have to go through the general statute process of putting it out there, so that someone else, if they wanted to come in and, and upset that bid, they could do that. But we've got to start somewhere. And, uh, because we're accumulating properties, and the county's not in the business of doing that. We need signs out there. We need to, if we, if we want to take a bid, we can take it. Let's go through the upset process, and, and get these properties off the road, put them back on the road for collecting taxes, and not holding them for the county, and not getting anything for them, but just costing us money.
Can, can we legally do this? Means that we, the deed's not recorded, we actually don't own it yet?
Well, you can decide if you want to accept the bid or decline it, if you want to do that.
I'd be a little more comfortable waiting until after we're, we actually own the property.
That's fine.
Which would be, but we should know that by the, by the middle of the month meeting. I, I don't have a problem with doing something, but I just, not, I'm not comfortable accepting a bid on property that we don't have a legal title to right now.
So Renee, looking at this, says it has a tax value, value of 29,507. Now, this is the one acre, and I guess that was from, because it was two independent taxpayers here. So now, the adjacent landowner would attach to that, would the tax value decline, because you're talking about the one?
No.
It would be, it would still be at this tax value.
Yeah.
Which I think they, you know, obviously, they would have, I'd rather see the adjacent landowner have the opportunity. But I'm sort of like Henry. We need to turn these properties over and move them off the county's books, and when they do, into the public, so that they are taxpaying properties again, or whatever. Does this 9833, that's the, that's Travis Ellis's fees, as well as the tax?
That was, that is what our bid was. Let me go back to.
The taxes.
What we did was, we set.
That was the county's bid.
Well, the county's bid was set at what the attorney cost was, and the accumulated taxes and penalties.
The taxes at the time were 5,381.21. The combined fees were 4,452.36. Of that, 1,042.06 was advanced costs, such as, you know, service, that sort of thing. And $3,410.30 were attorney fees.
So basically, the attorney fees cost much more than the land and the taxes.
Is that a question? Commissioner Jordan, I am in great favor with your comments about getting these properties off of our books, somebody else's ownership, for a lot of reasons. One, because we will be receiving taxes on those. And if it were not for the, having the deed in, not being in our name as of today, I've, I've gone and looked at this property, and I would consider the, the bid that we've got as something I would be willing to accept. If it were not for the deed issue, I, I would be willing to second a motion by anybody to do that. Having said that, I, I would like to, I would like to notify the person who made the bid, not that we've accepted it, but we're only waiting on the deed, so that we don't lose that bid.
Okay.
I think, I think that's, that's what I'm advocating. I'm not advocating that we accept it today, but make sure that we let them know that the mid-January meeting, we'll make a decision, once we get the deed in hand.
Can we, can we say that then, Henry, that notify this particular person that has bid it, so that the day that the deed is?
Upset thing now.
Yeah, that's right. The day the deed is recorded, you notify them and say, hey, there's 10-day upset bid, and post that?
What's going to happen is, once we, if we accept this bid in the mid-January meeting, then we will have to go through an upset period of, of a notice that this bid?
We, we will have to post that bid.
30 days.
And then, well, 10 days. It's a 10-day period.
That's what I'm saying, that we go ahead and that we say, accept this offer.
And, and you can't move forward from a legal standpoint until the deed is recorded.
And just, and make this, the notice is that, soon as we get it deeded to us, that we notify them of that day, and start it immediately from that period.
Can you receive a bid now? I mean, is any other side, they want to bid on this now? Is it past time that they can bid on it again?
Yeah, these have closed with the clerk's office.
What I'm saying is, this 4,500, if we accept it, and somebody comes in tomorrow with $5,000, we've already told, we can't do that, right?
Well, no, that's just a matter of an upset bid, is what that 5,000 would be. Now, they are going to have to put a 5% down on this. I would suggest we not require that she do that until the deed is in our hands, so.
I don't see how you can.
Yeah, I think the only thing we're saying is, just let them know that it, it will be acted on in the January 18th or 17th meeting.
Are we entertaining, are we going to entertain a motion that we are accepting the bid today, or are we basically just putting this off until mid-January?
We're waiting. I, I would, in making them aware of what transacted today, I would make them aware that, that we couldn't, because only we don't have the deed recorded in our name, and that that was the only, the only reason, from this commissioner's point of view.
I, I agree with Jack on that.
Okay, we'll contact her and let her know this will be acted on in mid-January, and what's going on with that. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking about Henry's comments about the signage. We have to get that signage out there. That has to be a priority, um, to do that, because I see some properties, I see a property here that, that I would be interested in, as commissioner. I'm not going to put a bid on this property, but.
We'll be glad to accept your bid, Jack.
If I'm sitting here in this audience, and I see that at Eleanor's Crossroads, that's a, that's a small piece of property, but it's in that intersection. If I'm not going to Eleanor's Crossroads.
Mm-mm, it's not at the intersection.
It's not the intersection?
No.
Okay.
Mm-mm. That was actually a lot that, in number of years back, Midway Homes had put a deed to trust on, that her house was put on. And for some unknown reason, Midway Homes, Jim Walter Homes, apparently, what they feel they're putting a deed to trust on is the home itself, not the land. And a lot of times, what happens in their repossessions is the home is taken off the lot, and the land just left sitting there. And that was what that ended up being. And it is a small lot, 65 by 50.
One of the thing about it is, we're showing 1,000, oh, our final bid was $1,739. You put a sign out there, 1,739, or BO, or best offer.
Like I say, we're working with folks on getting some prices on the sign. The issue with the signs, at this point, that we've had a lot of questions with, is we're trying to come up with a sign that we can utilize more than once. It's not just a one-time thing. So we're trying to come up with signs that we can utilize for the foreclosure sales, plus for sales if, you know, we end up with the property. So we're trying to find signs that we can interchange information on and whatnot easily, without having to have more information printed, and that sort of thing. Because when you're talking about having just one individual specialty sign printed, it's not cheap. And so that seems to be the issue, is with them finding a way that we can kind of interchange information on the sign, without having to just buy individual signs specific to the property.
So we're all in agreement, then, to address this on the evening meeting?
Yes, I, I, if you need a motion, I'll make a motion that we address the bid offer for the Tuggy Ull property on the mid-January meeting.
All right, we've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. All right, we'll, we'll take care of that, um, meeting. Make sure she gets the information.
Okay. Any other questions?
Attorney Godwin drawing up the deed on it.
No, it would be Travis Ellis.
Travis. You'll be getting in touch with him.
Yes, we'll talk with him to make sure we have all of that taken care of before the mid-January meeting.
Okay.
Our property tax delinquent listing for 10 years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, same procedure.
Okay, I've got to go back and figure out that procedure, Johnny. That's been, that's been a year ago.
I'm talking about the notice in the newspaper, just so.
Oh, that is, okay.
When we get ready to do that, that we do the 10-year listing.
Do, I would like to have a motion from the board for that, if that's what y'all want to do this year. And if you want to, we can do that at the January, the mid-month meeting is fine, because if you remember correctly, last year, we put all 10 years in the tabloid, instead of just the current year.
That's right.
So if y'all want to think about that, and we can make that decision at the mid-January, because we like to get that advertised as soon after the first of March as we possibly can.
I think, I think we got some results from it, from what I've been looking at these things.
I'm hoping it got the attention of one, anyway.
All right, what's next?
If no other questions, Gwen is going to go over the refunds with you.
What about the software? Are you going to do that?
Oh, software, I forgot that.
I wasn't exactly sure what y'all wanted to talk about.
Well, I, I had.
All things, I should have remembered that.
I had brought it to the attention of the county manager, and might have talked to a few of the board members. We have previously budgeted funds to upgrade the tax software system. And part of that budgeting process, I think we may have 40, 50, $60,000 accumulated, but part of that process was that we budgeted sufficient collections this year to possibly close the gap of what we needed to, to do, to take care of the proposed amount that you had presented earlier. And you are pretty much on target for collections of delinquent taxes, to probably fill that, the gap that we needed to fill, to, to be able to finance it, or to pay for it, rather. So at this time, providing the board agrees, I think that what you should do is to draw up your request for proposal, to present to the board for approval. In other words, we can put it out there and get bids from contractors. I know that there's a specific contractor that you may have leaned to, but we would need to put it out there, and, you know, if he's, if that contractor is the low bidder, or low presenter, certainly, even if he wasn't, you know, low cost is not always a determining factor. But we can look at that and, and move forward on it, because it looks like right now that we're going to meet our goal of what we have budgeted, and what we're going to bring in to take care of the software upgrade.
Okay, well, we really kind of have two different issues, software and hardware. My biggest concern has been hardware, of course, what I have addressed in the past. If we're going to upgrade hardware and pay to move the current software to new hardware, you might as well upgrade the software in the process. A lot of the vendors that we deal with, as far as our tax software, they're not basically what you would call a turnkey thing. If you buy the hardware through them, they are normally a third-party vendor in that process. So what I would suggest with this is that, if we're looking at putting out RFPs, doing so on software strictly, and then, once the decision is made at that point, we look at the recommendations for that specific software, as far as the hardware is concerned.
Makes sense to me.
Because some of them, you know, the hardware is going to be, the recommendations with hardware is going to be different with the different vendors that you go with. And like I say, to buy through them, they're just going to act as a third-party. And like I say, to buy through them, they're just gonna act as a third-party vendor.
So you're saying just go with the software or hardware?
Just as far as putting out the RFPs, I would just go from the software standpoint and then look at the hardware once we make that decision, as to what hardware is gonna work with that.
Our budget included, did it not include hardware or software?
It did, but it, it was.
I think the number that you have is a turnkey number. And I think what she's saying is, just the practicality is not, is not a turnkey operation, is what she's saying.
No, the number that you had, I think they gave us a range of six to eight thousand dollars with the hardware. That was just a number off the top of their head, but it would be dealing with a third-party vendor. And, and, you know, we may be in a position too where the server, we have the financial server that we could, you know, upgrade that server to include everything. Cause that server's about five years old at this point. So I would just look at the software first and then look at the platform that you need to put that software on.
So Renee, really in this, the new age of cloud-based computing, are there any of these vendors of tax software moving towards the off-site storage like this and cloud-based? Because, you know, the server, uh, people moving away from those local servers and moving to the mainframes, which has automatic backups and things like that.
And that, and that's exactly what we have with like our website, the GIS site and whatnot. That server is off-site. I don't know that any of the vendors, um, at this point do that, but that's certainly something that can be part of the RFP.
Well, what that does, it really is a lot, it's a lot less expensive.
Well, it takes the server off-site. You don't have to upkeep the server.
Not only that, it, it, it helps you on a technology-type base, basis too, because you don't really have to have someone monitoring that as much as you did before. They are responsible for all the backups and, uh, and so you, you really, um, it's a cost-effective thing. I, I mean, it's scary sometimes, but.
It's a lot less headache if I don't have to deal with it.
Well, it is on the local people, and then you really put that into people that really have the technical expertise to manage those kind of things for you.
Renee, could you get with Chase and maybe he could help you work, work that out?
Yes.
We paid Chase to be our IT guy, and I'm sure he's got some of these expertise we're talking about.
Normally with your cloud-based computing, your upfront costs may seem a little bit higher, but you save tons down the road as far as your maintenance backups.
Yeah.
Making sure that your room temp is what it's supposed to be, so your server doesn't overdo and stuff like that.
Yeah, I, I would definitely depend on Chase when it comes to the hardware part of this.
What time, type timeframe you think you need to get that RFP presentation?
I could try to get it together by the first of February. January's gonna be a pretty busy month with us, with getting the second notice bills out and dealing with the abstracts and that sort of thing. At the latest, it would be March.
You wanna make a motion to authorize her to do our, our, uh, RFP?
F.P.
Right.
Is, is RFP, um, are we paying a fee for that, or are we using it as government?
It's just request for, for.
It's just basically putting out the guidelines as to what I'm looking for in a system.
It's something that's drafted internally. It's something that's drafted internally. There's no cost to it, other than her time, obviously.
And we, when we do a RFP, we're sure that a proper number of vendors are seeing that? I mean, they constantly checking county websites for this kind of stuff?
Well, do that on website and do that on, um,
I, I mean, we can, the vendors out there that have North Carolina-specific tax software is not a very large base, so I don't think it'll be a problem to make sure that they all receive it. And I think you're.
You can specifically target, if you know there's five that you know of that exist, you can directly mail it to them without even having to wait for them to somehow get it.
Okay.
Some of your biggest costs that you're gonna see with this is gonna be your data conversion. And needless to say, that's one of my biggest concerns with it, is taking my current data and making sure it moves over correctly to the new database. Um, and that's where a lot of your cost comes in, is with that data conversion. The work that has to be done with that. And, and that's something I will certainly look at when bids come in, is who has taken, you know, like my current database and converted it to their database. That's very important to me because it lets me know they've done it before. I'm not a guinea pig.
You won't, you won't make as a motion?
I'll make a motion that, uh, the tax administrator draw up an RFP, or submission to upgrade the current tax software system that we have.
All right, we've got a motion, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign.
Now, I'll work on that, and as soon as I do get it together, I'll go ahead and email it to you so you'll have it to read over and offer suggestions. Thank you.
Well, county manager, you're gonna be the one that puts it out there, so, um.
Yeah, Renee, Chase and I will work together to make sure it's right.
Hello, Quinn.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Good.
Morning.
Hum.
Afternoon.
Yeah.
This is where we give money back, right?
Yes, sir. That's what I was about to say. Now, we're gonna ask you to give it back.
Call Earl and tell him we do give money back sometimes.
Um, in your package, um, behind your Tax Collector's Report, the first refund request, um, as you will see, is again this month, um, has a cover sheet with a spreadsheet. Um, in December, of course, we did collect from escrow accounts, um, by, through mortgage companies. And these are refunds back to mortgage companies for various reasons. And all of these are basically some of the same reasons as we looked at last month. Um, if, I'll be glad to go through each one of these, or if you all wanna review these, if you have questions about any of these, I'll be glad to answer those questions.
Who's gonna get the money? The taxpayer or the, uh?
The mortgage company.
Mortgage company?
Yes, sir.
In all of these cases?
Yes, sir. We have to send it back to them.
This was all paid by the mortgage company, even though they, you know, they paid it.
Yes.
All right, y'all seen the list. Do you have any more questions? Does not entertain a motion that we accept the tax refunds as presented?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign. All right, thank you, Gwen.
Thank you. And I do have one more.
Okay.
There is one more refund behind that one, um, and this is for, um, not an individual, but a company who paid taxes. Um, they actually overpaid, and as you'll see in the reason for the refund, um, they overpaid, but they actually overpaid on another parcel, um, other than this parcel listed because they paid a number of parcels in one check, um, that, that they have with the county. And they have no other taxes that, um, are due at this time. And I'm requesting, we are requesting that we refund this, this amount back to this company.
Three sixty-two eighty-five.
Yes.
All right, we've got a refund here. Uh, any questions? If not entertain a motion that we refund the taxes, overpay taxes back to the owner?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gwen. All right, the next thing on our agenda will be the Water Department, Timmy. You okay, Pat?
All right, um, I believe everybody has a copy of the water main extension policy I was asked to, to create. Does everybody had opportunity to review that policy? Are there any questions about the policy?
I think we need to read it first, uh.
Oh, this, this is the existing, this, this is the new policy.
Oh, the new one, oh.
I think the problem we got is, is there's.
This, this matter was already addressed in our original rules and regulations, which is how I said that this matter was handled before. It solely falls on the inquiring party to pay for water main extensions.
What is the, um, the eighty-five hundred dollars, Timmy? What is the breakdown of that?
You mean in the cost share example?
Yeah, yeah.
That, that was just, it's, it's explained when you go through how the cost sharing works. That's just numbers that I pulled out as far as a baseline number to start with.
You calculating what man-hours and material in the eighty-five hundred?
Yes, that, that, that includes everything with the exception of the engineering fee.
So in other words, that is the labor to install, the piping materials, the water taps, the whole thing, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And like I said, this is just a, a figure of number that I kinda started with a baseline of ten thousand, pulled out fifteen hundred for engineering fees. So it gave me of a baseline of eighty-five hundred dollars to break down the cost sharing.
Is that number realistic for a thousand feet?
That, that is pretty close to realistic, yes, sir.
Would that include six taps?
Yeah, if you look, it kinda gives you an example breakdown, um, just example extension site information, which is referred to in the beginning of the policy where the inquiring party would present a certain amount of information to start the process. This is that information, a thousand-foot, four-inch water main, um, one four-inch valve, uh, one blow-off hydrant, and there'll be six proposed new water taps for this project as far as this example goes.
And water tap, what would six water taps cost at, at total cost?
Three-quarter inch water taps would be seven hundred and fifty dollars each.
So that's forty-five hundred dollars that we would have in water taps, are they?
That's correct, but three hundred dollars, three hundred dollars of the tap-on fee is used for the cost sharing. The remainder of that covers expense.
Right.
Tim, the, on the front, uh, front page of it, I noticed we're qualifying criteria, one, two, three. The third, uh, bullet point there, an approved licensed contractor. Do you think we should stipulate in there at what level of a license specifically?
We do not have to for a project that's gonna be less than thirty thousand dollars. Any licensed general contractor can do a project of this size, because there's no way a thousand-foot main is gonna.
A thousand feet would typically would fall under thirty.
That, that is correct.
So general contractor or formal contractor?
General contractor.
Uh, another question I had when I was reading over this was, um, do we say anything in here? I don't remember seeing anything about onsite supervision.
Yes, sir. That is referred to in here. Um, if you look on the first page next to the last section, after permits have been required, construction of the water main extension may, um, begin by approved licensed contractor. The entire construction process will be monitored by the utility director for compliance with local, state, federal rules and regulations.
Good, thank you. I overlooked that.
Well, I read this thing and I've been thinking, giving it some thought. And, uh, really, that's something that could make it very simple. And this is the way I see it, and that's, this is the movement with our Merchant Commerce Park and some other things that, that has been done, that we have a utility fund. And to me, if these are taxpaying citizens, uh, and it's a feasible project, that the enterprise fund bears the cost of doing this project. And not to discount any fees for water taps for whatever, but I think that we are tapping on to our asset that's serving all the citizens of our county now. When it came out and was originally established, no one paid. It was grant money. No one paid. So let's take this example right here that we're looking at. So we've extended a thousand feet, and it's eighty-five hundred dollars cost to us. Well, we're gonna get seven hundred, or forty-five hundred dollars of this cost is actually gonna come back to us through these mains that are these water tap-ons that they have to do, if so be it. So now that leaves us about another four thousand dollars. Well, we got three thousand nine hundred and forty people that have water hookups. Should they not contribute one dollar apiece for the citizens of the Gates County to do this? I think that's more than fair to my neighbor. If he's, if I'm extending the line and providing the service to them, and not only by doing that, then they start getting into the revenue generation plan for the county to offset the enterprise fund. So I indirectly will benefit over time. Now, how long is it gonna take me to get my dollar back? I don't know. Maybe I'm getting ten cent a year. But then this, I mean, this makes it so much more simple to me. Now, the Board of Commissioners would have to approve whether it's viable to take and, uh, do this capital project or whatever, to extend the lines. But this is an asset that belongs to the county. Now, that's what the enterprise fund is for. And I think the citizens, whoever they are, if they're taxpaying citizens and they are gonna tap on to the water and contribute to that fund, I think that all of those people that have benefited over time freely need to pay. And that, and then, then you put it on a magnitude of people or homeowners, and a dollar is not too much to ask. And that's not, that's not a dollar, that's a dollar a year, man, for one, these one hookups. So this makes it so much more simpler in, uh, having to go through this. And it doesn't put a tremendous burden upon the citizen here that's trying to do something. He's already gonna have to pay seven hundred and fifty dollars. We know that. Oh, he's got to. So, um, then, all of these costs that are born here, that we have proven by our contractor, we take care of all those responsibilities in here to our satisfaction. And we solve the problem without having to go through this and put the burden upon the taxpayer. It's upon the water prize fund, who is accomplished by all of the shareholders of the fund, which is all of the taxpayers of Gates County that are tapped on to this water system. Would anyone out there be, uh, opposed to paying a dollar a year, man, to allow a citizen a tap-on? I'm not opposed to that. I mean, I, I think it makes it so much simpler.
Well, anytime, I'm, I'm not opposed to it as an individual, but anytime you get a dollar from a taxpayer, that's a tax.
Unfortunately, Jack, we're putting in a sewage system and we're asking all of the taxpayers of Gates County to contribute to that operating cost that is only being utilized by a few people. We just recently moved five hundred feet of line from, in front of the high school and put it down Stony Lane. We just recently did that.
That's a good thing. It's called economic development.
I agree with that. But who's bearing that cost? You and I.
That's what economic development's about.
That's right.
But before we get too far into this policy.
Let me just make this comment. This extension is referring to a specific individual that's, that's making application, or wants to make application to extend the water line.
That, that is what stemmed this policy, but this policy was not written for him. This policy was written to set forth a standard for any other situations that might arise of a water main being extended a thousand-foot or less.
Well, it looks like we've already got a policy.
We, we already, we already have a policy in our original rules and regulations that address this.
Now, what it says here is, is the county may construct extensions to its water lines to points within the service area. We may do that. If we wanna do it, we can do it. It says, but the county shall not be required to make such installations as the consumer makes application for services and advances to the county the entire cost of the installation. So that tells me that if we as a Board of Commissioners want to do it, we can do it. But we shall not be required. I mean, no one can say, well, you've got to do it. But, and if they say, we, we want it done, they, they can make application and pay for the whole cost. So there's, there's some leverage there, uh, for the county, even if we wanted to do it. If we said, I think it's a good thing, let's put water lines, uh, on this road, Road fourteen oh six or fourteen oh, fourteen-ten, whatever. We could do that based on this. Now, but if someone as, as the applicant has come to us and says they want to do that, then they would fall into this requirement of where they would have to make application, they would have to pay all the costs. And what we have is a person that's saying, I'm willing to do it myself. I'm willing to go under county supervision. I'm willing to bear all the costs, except for the engineering drawings.
And, and the materials. He's just willing to provide the labor. As far as his proposal.
Okay, well, it was my understanding that they were willing to pay the tap on fees. And when you, if, if you're gonna have four connections at seven hundred and fifty dollars, so we're talking, um, initially thirty-two hundred dollars.
Now, keep in mind, there's only, there's only one resident that's beyond this extension that's there currently. And they have not given any verbal agreement. They said, you know, if something happened to their well, they might would tap on. The other house is getting ready to be put on this extension proposal, has already got set up with their loan and everything to put down a well. They don't really, from, from what they expressed to me, they, you know, they like well water, that's what they grew up with, that's what they like. The ducks, they like well water, that's what they like. So really, the only ones that send question are lots that haven't even ser- been surveyed out and set up, has no property on them, has, has nothing, nothing's broke ground.
So how many, you're saying we only have one tap on?
There's one existing house that's owned this extension proposal right now.
So that would be the only upfront money that would...
And, and they have not agreed to tap on.
I think, I think that...
So there's no...
They're agreed to tap on, it don't, it don't cost them much of anything, I believe, is what I'm understanding.
And if their well goes out.
You know, I, from what I see, I'm, and it's been kind of brief. It looks like that we have something in place, and what we're looking to do here is to modify or amend what we already have.
That, that is correct. If, if you choose to do anything with this policy that was drafted, the rules and regulations, you would have to vote to make an amendment to change section seven of our existing rules and regulations to adopt the water main extension policy.
What kind of time, what, what kind of timeline do we have in responding to the, to the advocate that wants to extend the water line?
That I don't know, because the one that's presented to everybody has, that, that has brought this issue up, said he is just a voice for many others. But with my talking with the others involved, they're really indifferent.
Yeah, that, that is, um, I see this from a lot of different angles. One, you know, we're, we're here to serve. So we are providing a service.
But we're also a business. That's what a enterprise is, is a business.
We're providing, uh, we, we are here to provide services. There, there has to be a limitation, because this person could say, I'm gonna build a, a house down here ten thousand feet rather than a thousand feet, the cost would be prohibitive. Um, one of the things I don't like about the situation is we don't have any, um, we don't have any guarantees that the other parties are gonna ever tap on.
Exactly, and that's, that's what the policy kind of sets forth as standard. And you know, one of the big issues was the engineering fee. Well, if you come to the county and say, hey, we want to extend our water, we want you to extend our water line so me, my brother, and my cousin that live back here can tap on. We go spend fifteen hundred dollars for engineering fee, we break down what the cost is gonna be, which they would have to share some of that cost according to our existing rules and regulations, and they come up and say, hmm, well, it's cheaper for me to just buy a meter tap and run a private line to my residence. And then the county has just absorbed the fifteen hundred dollar engineering fee for no reason. And that, with them, if, if the inquiring party will go and put their money together and create and, and gain the engineering plans and designs for that project, that invests them into that project. That, that kind of holds them from wanting to back, back out. They've already invested their money, they've invested their interest, and they have also got the county on board as far as splitting some of the cost and sharing.
Have we ever, uh, to your recollection, extended water line to a subdivision? Let's say like Whitehurst Farms or...
No, sir.
And absorbed the cost?
That has always been treated as it says in the existing rules and regulations. The subdivider, the one creating that development, they build, they submit the plans to the county, the county approves them, the state approves them, they build and design the system, and then at the completion of that system, once the pressure test, the sampling, all the inspections are done, they deed over the, all the utility right of ways, the easements, the property, they, they deed everything to the county, then the county or the water system takes over that asset, and then they maintain and control that system therefore.
Tim, and, and the, the real reason we're at this juncture is the particular individual we're talking about has the ability...
To subdivide.
No, he has the ability to, to do some of the work. That's the reason we're here, talking in this particular situation, because he has the equipment and the know-how and the license.
Um, I think part of why we're here is what Timmy had said earlier, is who's gonna pay this upfront cost? That's another part of the reason why we're here is, does the county front this money? Or does the person who's requesting the extension of the system front the money? That's another part of why we're here.
One, one of the main reasons the water systems this day and time, it's been in existence for thirty-two years. And it wasn't free originally, it was twenty-five dollar tap on fee back in the late seventies. I believe it was fifteen upfront and ten upon water being turned on, which is, which is minor, but still, there, there was a fee, and all it took was one person on that road to invest twenty-five dollars, and that water system was gonna be run to the completion. But, I mean, that's neither here nor there.
Well, it is important, it's extremely important, Tim. Because of the fact we are all in the same boat. We are all shareholders and stakeholders in the county of Gates County. If we are taxpayers, then I've got the twenty-five dollar tap on back then. Now I'm asking you to put another dollar into the pot today with nominal dollars of today's dollars, which compared back to then of nineteen seventy-five or whenever, might, a dollar might be ten cent, I'd have to go calculate that. But that's not asking too much. Now, I don't, I don't mean we're gonna go out, and how many, how many miles of road in Gates County do not have a water ma- a water line in front of them now?
There's close to five hundred miles of water main in the ground. Um, remaining wise, I actually have information submitted to the state for a project that's through the EPA of trying to get those existing water mains that do not connect, like Daniels Road, Hackley Road, certain ones. But with this project, it can't be for growth. It has to be for water quality. And by having dead end lines, it affects water quality. It causes you to have to have a blow off plan as far as flushing your hydrants every so often just to make sure you don't get too much dead end line water just sitting and getting stale and stagnant. That is the reason that water systems this day and time take it upon their dollar to extend water mains is to eliminate loops, to create better water quality. One thing Gates County does not have is impact fees. Impact fees, as far as, and, that, that coincide with connection fees, that impact fee goes into a separate account. And that is for, when the growth gets and you hit your eighty percent, you have to start planning to expand your plant, expand your system to accommodate that growth. Gates County does not have that. Gates County's been fortunate enough that financially and the water quality that we have, it keeps our costs low and it allows us to, to keep a good quality water to the system at a low rate. So just keep in mind, a lot of revenue, if you check around the surrounding counties, you look at what their tap on fees are, and then their fees, or their, um...
Impact.
Impact fees are, and you compare to what we charge the citizens. We're, we're cheap as far as cost.
And I understand, but again, that's what we're now.
And, and kind of the way I'm looking at it's more from a business standpoint. You know, i- if we extend the main for everybody that wants water to come to their house, I've got a couple of other situations and folks that have come to me about extending the mains, that's a lot further than this, and it's about the same amount of connections. So that's the reason I created the policy, to make it equal and fair for anybody that would want to use it and not handle it on a base debate, uh, uh, case to case. Then you're gonna get into the good old boy system, where he's friends with him, so he done it for him, but he told him, no, he wasn't gonna do it for him. You put it in writing, you let everybody abide by the same standards, you eliminate that.
Well, have you discussed this with the applicant?
Not, not in detail, no. Because it hadn't come before y'all, there was no need to discuss anything that was not...
Well, I, I'd, I'd like to see what their, his hangups would be.
Well, keep in mind, this isn't just about him. This is about every inquiring party on that lane if...
But whatever, whatever the applicant came up with, it may be something that we could work out or, or, or if we couldn't work it out, then we would understand that this is, this is what we would go forward with. But, uh, you know, for us to arbitrarily, this person is the one that brought the issue to the board. And for us to arbitrarily approve a plan that has not been discussed with him and find out what specific issues they have with it, to me is a little bit counterproductive. It's, it's, it's saying that, you know, this is the way it is. When I read this policy, I see a lot of leeway in there. I see leeway in this policy where if this board says, I think it's economically feasible for the county, let's put a water line in this subdivision, let's put a water line in this road, we could do it.
Join the old one, Henry.
Yeah, the county may, we may extend, we may make extensions.
That's just the county proposes it, not, not, not if somebody proposes it to us.
That's what I'm saying. You know, even in this situation, if we looked at this situation and says, hey, I think this is a good prospect of, uh, of adding additional customers and, and, and providing a service to the, to the citizens of the county, we could, we could bore the whole cost and, and bring that line in there and just have them make tap on fees, not cost them a thing. So, you know, in saying that, I'm saying that certainly I think you ought to give him a chance to look this over and let me hear what he, what his issues are, and let's go forward with it rather than just approving this policy today and, um, without the individual having the opportunity to, to express what their, some of their concerns are.
Now, keep in mind, I'm not asking you to approve anything. Y'all asked me to draft this policy. I just drafted it and brought it to you. So now I've just put it back in y'all's plate to, to figure out what you want to do with it. I, I didn't bring this to you to be approved, I just did what I was asked.
I, I'd certainly...
Because we already kind of...
I would prefer that, that we have the, the applicant, I'll call her name while everyone knows who he is, I guess. Just have him look it over, just, just have him make some comments to the board, and then we could go forward in it.
Since, uh, in the last ten years, how many times have we extended our water lines?
For customer connection?
Not just period.
Zero.
Zero.
Well, it's two thousand. In two thousand, there was a couple of extensions made to eliminate dead ends.
So this, this got...
That gained no more, no new connections, just to eliminate dead ends.
Right, okay. So I go back to my original thing. I think that this is a very minute part, that you asked all of the citizens or the participating people in the enterprise fund to contribute.
How often is that one dollar?
A year.
Okay.
I just want to be clear.
Ten cent a month. And if it's eighty-five hundred dollars, thirty-nine hundred and forty people, and, and you're taking to that, and you're gonna get forty-five hundred of it back in this example, so that's four thousand dollars out there, one dollar from every water customer.
Timmy, how many did you say you had waiting in the wings that maybe want extensions? I mean, this is not a one time thing.
There's two other sites.
We could be looking at least four or five times.
There's two other sites that have addressed it, but they are greater than a thousand foot. One of them's two miles.
If we don't put a limit on it, then they would be...
Well, that, that, that's the other thing, I mean, I don't mean just arbitrarily, you're gonna have to do some, some understanding of what is the impact to the total water pri- uh, enterprise fund? What is the total impact? But ask it, you do have thirty-nine hundred and forty base customers to absorb that capital cost. So just like, is that not fair to my fellow citizen that is ta- helping pay my taxes in Gates County to, to offer these services unto them? And as I just said, we're gonna ask the, the cit- all of the water customer citizens to participate in the operating cost for this, uh, water and sewer, well, related sewer. That's what we're gonna be asking for.
Not, not being condescending, but how is that any different than asking the citizens to create a certain amount of dollars apiece to help pay for this new library?
I agree. I don't disagree with that.
So I mean, that...
I think, I think the current policy allows us... Uh, I think the, um, current policy allows the county to, uh, make an extension if we desire to do so. And so, you know, that would just be a matter of the board voting, um, uh, to do that. But I, I would like to see, uh, as, as I've said before, that you bought, you've done what we asked you to do.
Yes, sir.
And, and as I look at this, I, like I said, I compare it to the old policy. It's basically, uh, uh, somewhat of an amendment. Uh, but just before we would implement this, I would like to hear, uh, what the comments are from the citizen that got this started. And as, as, as John has proposed, you know, the county could look at, if it's feasible, if it's fair, you know, we could look at putting that project in. But I'm not sure that's, that's the decision that we would want to make.
That's right.
But, uh, but we have the latitude to do it. When I read this, Attorney Godwin, I, I, you know, you're the, you're the expert with, with documents. But when I read this, seven A, it, it seems to me that we can, we as the board, we could put in lines anywhere we want, uh, without the cost to the citizen, no more than a tap in fee or whatever. But we are not required to do it unless the citizen make application and, and pay those upfront funds.
And what that gives us the ability to do is exactly what's been done in the past. Extend water mains for, and it could be for growth or potential new tap ons, but it's primarily for water quality. Dead end lines affect water quality, and that's what we're trying to eliminate. And also keep in mind, additional strain that's getting ready to put on this enterprise fund will piggyback in the sewer system until it finally gets developed to the point where it's self-sustaining.
It looks like, uh, more that we're at a point where, uh, either we want to make a motion to, uh, adopt this or to, uh, table it and ask Timmy to, Timmy to get in touch with the applicant and have them address what their concerns are and bring it back to the board. I'm not asking, I don't think we'd be asking to change anything, but just get what their concerns are, and we'd look at those and, uh, and we could move forward on this.
I can, I can tell you what his concerns are. He's, his attitude is, he's donating the labor. And if the rest of the inquiring parties wants to foot the bill, they can foot it, but that's all he's investing in it, this is the labor.
I, I would say talk to him, get his comments, then come back.
I'd, I'd like to say something right, right, just shortly. And the eighty-five hundred dollars, and you're talking about the six possible tap ons?
Yes, sir.
When you divide that six into the eighty-five hundred dollars, that leaves fourteen sixty-six point six six, something like that. And then if you charge ten dollars a month per person or per tap on for their water, at the end of twelve months, you've paid for your system, you've paid for that eighty-five hundred dollars.
Keep in mind, I had pulled expenses as far as the discount, added the seven hundred and fifty dollars. There's, there's four hundred, four hundred and fifty dollars of that is just the brass, the saddle, and the expense that goes into that, because there, there is expense for installing.
I know, I know there's expense, Tim, but you're, you started out with eighty-five hundred dollars here to run that line down there.
Yes, sir.
And that was with the, uh, people paying in or whatever, or whatever you're gonna get for your tap on fees. All right, but you still divided out. If you get that six tap ons in twelve months, you've paid for that eighty-five hundred dollars. I'm sorry, that, that is twelve, ten dollars a month for twelve months is a fast payout, in my opinion. And then you're, then you're gonna start making money on it.
Yeah, and, and it, it clearly states that the cost sharing is calculated based on a two-year return in investment.
Right.
Which is how I believe the co-op and some other utilities base theirs. And in the cost sharing plan that I developed, it pulled our expenses that the water department directly, because we will provide the, the taps, the, the saddles... cause we will provide the, the taps, the, the saddles, the court stop, the tubing, the hardeners, the angle valve, the meter, the meter box, the check valve. All of that will be provided, and that's where the money out of that seven hundred and fifty tap-on fee, accumulated the cost of that and pulled it out.
Right. I, I realize, and you've done, as Mr. Jordan said, you, you've done what we asked you to do. And you've done a good job of it. And I also understand that what you're trying to help us do is, um, come up with a formula so we don't set precedents in any other manner except formula. So I can appreciate that. But we have had so much dialogue on it. I mean, I, I was really hoping to, to vote on this and, and adopt some resolution. But with Mr. Jordan's comments about, uh, actually going to that individual so that we can gain a little insight from a taxpayer who's actually in this situation, um, I think would be, would be helpful. So if privately, privately, if you two gentlemen could, could talk on that.
I would rather try to get him here at the January night meeting and let him.
I think he's here right now.
Yeah, but we need to, we need a private discussion between you two. To, uh, to come up with the, the best information we can and to be able to, um, if we could get something in, in email, which you guys are good about that, in advance, so we can look at any new information that you captured, then we can vote on it at that January night meeting. If that's.
Yeah, I, I, I think, as, as you said, Jack, um, get that information. Have Mr. Roundtree look over the policy and address the specific issues that he has concerns with, or how he can make this policy work. Not just identify the issue, but how he can make, how it could work and, uh, what adjustments he can make in order to fall in line with this policy. And I, that's what I would, would, I would, we would, I think that's what we need in order to move forward on it. As Jack has said, uh, to address it maybe in the, in the January night meeting.
Mr. Chairman or Vice Chairman, I'd like to table, I'd like to do that and table the matter until then.
Until you'll make the other motion to table it to the night meeting?
I'll make that in form of a motion.
Second.
I'll have a motion in a second to table this with Timmy to discuss it with, uh, the concerned citizen and, uh, bring it back to us on the night meeting for a de- uh, uh, a decision. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving to our old business section. Uh, Toby, County Manager?
Okay, several months ago, as we're all aware, you interviewed engineers and architects for what to do with the courthouse. You selected Clearscapes as the most qualified. You have them for you, their contract. It is broken into phases, as was asked, and it gives a lot of detail. As far as where you want to go from here, I guess is where we're at today, is making a decision on what you want to do.
As, as I've looked over this, if we approve this today, we would, uh, have to, uh, make a budget amendment to allocate the cost for the phase one, uh, uh, part of it. Is that correct?
Uh, depending upon how you approved it, if you approved only phase one, then yes, you would have to do a budget, well, you'd have to do a budget amendment for whatever you approved today, I guess is the answer to your ultimate question.
I think the part that I was concerned about was, uh, I had it marked up, the fact that I believe phase one would include identifying, uh, funding sources.
No, sir, that's phase two.
Phase two?
You'll turn to the third page in bullet point three.
Phase one does include identifying potential.
So it's funding study.
If you look at the third page in, number three, it says tax credit and grant application.
That's right.
Okay, I think that was the answer to his question.
That would be the application, okay.
That's the number two.
The study, the funding study would be a study to try to find and see where we could go find grants and tax credits.
Yeah, phase two would actually identify the tax credit and make an application for such.
Yeah, so, so part of the funds that we would be expending would include, uh, written summary, identifying potential sources, contact information, application requirements and potential project impacts, anticipated app, application cost and the likelihood of success.
That's what it says.
So part of phase one, uh, would get us a deliverable as to identifying what the county cost would be, if we were to get some of these funding sources or if we weren't likely to get it. So having said that, I'm, I'm for moving forward with, uh, with phase one.
I think part of this is also if we're gonna move forward, we need to go ahead and identify a committee to work with them for identification of what it's gonna be used for. Cause none of, none of this, uh, funding and, uh, tax credits can be even pointed to until you have some kind of idea of what direction you want to go with the building.
And I think that's, that's the whole problem here, is identifying what you're gonna actually do with it. And not only that, if you look on, uh, the, I think it's the third, might be the last, but next to the last page, and they start talking that, uh, we would anticipate a working construction budget in the range of two million to two million five. And a total project budget in the range of two point seven to three point two. Well, if that is their projection right now, why don't we do phase two and find out the tax application aspects and see what we're gonna be getting back? What, what are the benefits of the tax? Is it appropriate? Will we get that?
Well, we won't be getting any tax credit, that was, I was surprised that was even in there.
Yeah, well, you can sell tax credits, if you do it, if it's income-producing, you get twenty percent from the federal and twenty percent from the state. If it's non-income-producing, the state has a thirty percent tax credit. So now, if it's three million dollars, that's nine hundred thousand dollars and then discounted by the amount that the corporation that buys this tax credit. And he said approximately ten percent, so that's ninety thousand. So it's a net gain of eight hundred and ten thousand dollars if we do that.
And taking that in consideration, you're, you're assuming that, um, one of the uses would be revenue-producing?
No, thirty percent, thirty percent of three million is nine hundred thousand. That's not, don't change nothing, it's not income-producing. It's forty percent would be one point two million if we change it to an income-producing. Twenty percent federal, twenty percent state. If it's non-income produ- income-producing, it's a thirty percent tax credit. So, three million, thirty percent, nine hundred thousand. Three million, forty percent, one point two, discounted by about ten percent, he said. So a range of ninety thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That you're paying the corporation to take this tax credit. So why don't we get them to see if they can get a credit and get it approved? Let's pay them to do that. And then if we get that, then we move.
Well, the, the difference is thirty-three thousand versus sixty-nine thousand.
Right, but it looks to me like, like, Henry, looking at what they say on that page there, if they've already projected it to be at three million dollars, or know it could be, they got something to work with. You don't need all this other stuff if they, if they think that's the range for it, to make the application, I wouldn't think. Now, I don't know.
Well, suppose the decision is that, you know, we, we didn't find any, uh, potential sources for taking advantage of the tax credits or.
Then we're gonna have a problem.
Well, but then, but, but we, at that time, we spent sixty-nine thousand dollars versus, uh, thirty-three.
Well, what, why, why can't we just spend the thirty-six thousand and not the front end thirty-three? Existing condition drawings and nothing, they, they go there with what they have now. They've already done that. And go to the person they're approaching for these tax credits and say, hey, we want to do this.
Well, I think they're gonna have to do an existing condition structural assessment. All of these things are gonna have to be done to get to phase two.
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that's true to apply for a tax credit with a corporation.
What, uh?
I, I don't know, and I really don't know, but.
Would y'all be interested in, uh, in having, putting a work session together and bringing the Clearscape people? Now we've got a contract in hand to look at and, and maybe sit down with them and talk to them about some of these ideas? Well, I see, I mean, before we, you know, we could sit here and talk about this for the rest of the day and really we, we wouldn't be moving nowhere, for phase one, phase two, phase three.
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me ask this question. It, it, it may bear, uh, decision on where we go with this. We've had discussion, I've had discussion with, uh, with you guys about, uh, forming this committee. I've already heard the word, some, I think somebody mentioned it earlier. At what, at what point, um, would you, would you guys recommend formation of that committee? And I, I say that because you said something at a workshop, I didn't know if that.
I believe that, that point now, the committee should be, be formed right now. A pretty, maybe not today, but in that workshop, perform the committee and, uh.
At the workshop?
At the workshop and, and start working on the direction we want to go. Cause you can't find tax credits and you've got an idea what you can do with the building. And some kind of viable, I mean, if you're gonna turn it into office space and release it out or you're gonna, um, turn it into a playhouse or museum, it's, it's a whole different set of, uh, funding and, and rules is gonna have to be done with. You gotta have some kind of direction to go in this. I mean, we, we've got it, we've, we've got a building that we've got to determine what to do with it and then start looking for the, uh, funding for it. And that's what the heat, if our mum were right, when Clearscape gentleman was here with the, uh, the original proposals, that's what he said, when he needed to know where we wanted to go with it and, and some direction for he'd even come close to identifying any kind of funding options.
Well, if I remember correctly, um, in their criteria and their expertise, I think funding was one of their strengths.
Well, that's, that's why a workshop with somebody that does the funding would, would probably be pretty smart.
I, I'd like to ask the, the County Manager if, um, if, if we were to have a workshop, there's any timeline that we're looking at? I mean, if we could do that?
Commissioner Jordan recommended, I don't know if you heard him, but he just wanted to tack it on to the, maybe the night meeting. And I would think maybe come in early, do it early before the night meeting, something along those lines. If you wanted to do a workshop and use that as a vehicle to possibly begin identifying strategies and putting your committee together, I think you would be well-served to put a committee together before you go spending a whole bunch of money. Even if you did phases one and two, you're talking about seventy thousand dollars, which is nothing compared to the third phase, which is somewhere in the two and a half million dollar range. You know, if you know going in that you're not gonna do the third phase, then it's kind of pointless to do one and two. You know, you're gonna need some kind of commitment from, from everybody on the front end, is my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to poll the, uh, I'd like to poll the, the board.
Kenny, would you, Kenny, would you like to put input on this?
I'd like to see a workshop and sit down and discuss it with them.
Jack?
I'd, I'd be in favor of that and, uh, in keeping with Mr. Jordan's comments, uh, tack that on an hour before or hour and a half before.
We'll probably need to make it a couple of hours if you're gonna do this. This is, this can be a long discussion, I'm sure.
So say five.
We'll start at five. Charlie?
Well, the number one thing is knowing what you're gonna do with it. The second thing is getting the input from the citizen and how they actually feel about this. My original deal was, there again was the library. This is eleven thousand four hundred feet, I believe is what they say that's in there. I don't want to go down the same road we went with the last time and spend unnecessary money. And I think it's imperative that we know, but it does say in here, based, based on our experience, many grants and tax credit programs, like the historical tax credit and Golden Leaf and rural development programs require a developed design before they can be considered. I don't know what that, it looks to me like, you know, that's a selling point for them to, to sell part of their services, that they want you to have that. I don't know if that's a hundred percent true statement, that what you gotta have. And I don't have enough background. But I do know this, that I don't want to burden the citizens without these tax credits, without their input again. I think that this library could be, and that whole, just like happened in Jackson County, North Carolina and the western part of the county, they did this very thing, took their old courthouse and then made a beautiful library. And I've showed you several plans of where we could do this. You make the citizens of Gatesville and most of the citizens in the county, that my experience and what I've been hearing, that think it should be in the county seat. So I think we have an opportunity, we're talking about one point five million. Well, we're already halfway there, if that's what we wanted to do. And so, I'd like to know what these people could turn into if you told them, said, hey, I'm gonna turn it into a library and see what they would come back and see what they would say. And kill two birds with one stone.
So are you saying?
I don't want to go out here and, I don't mind spending the thirty-six to maybe to find out something, but I sure don't want to get over here in phase three and not know exactly what I want to do, whereas costing me a quarter of a million dollars.
Are you saying you're willing to do the workshop or not?
Yes.
Is that okay? Is that fine?
I'd like, I'd like input from the citizens also.
Well, I'm sure that we can, I mean, it's gonna be an open workshop, we can advertise that that's what you'd like to do. Um, we probably ought to talk to the designer before and maybe have a public meeting. Henry, is that, I mean, you, you done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, let's discuss this, uh, in doing, in a workshop setting. And hopefully we can have Clearscapes to come and, and be with us to, to kind of go over, um, some of their thoughts as well as, uh, helping us to recognize that any, anything we move forward in it. We spend thirty-six thousand dollars and, uh, they can reassure us that most of that two point five million dollars is, 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 uh, is a good chance of getting, that's a good investment. Thirty-six thousand dollars for two point five million dollars is a, a good investment. I'm not, I'm sure anyone would be willing to do that. So, I don't think we should just look at this and say, well, I'm gonna spend thirty-six thousand dollars as the county's money. But we're spending thirty-six thousand dollars to see what the potential is for getting the additional funds that we need to move forward in this project. And, uh, I think Clearscape will be able to reassure us on some of those things and, and, uh, probably, uh, give us some, some, some guidance in, uh, in moving forward to make that happen, uh, as quickly as possible.
All right, let's, let's make this into the motion to, uh, start to have a workshop on the, at five o'clock on the, what is the date on that?
Eighteenth, eighteenth.
Uh, see if we can, and you gonna come in contact?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get in contact.
We'll make that a motion that we have a workshop at five o'clock on the eighteenth and discuss this contract and, and hopefully with the Clearscape people.
So, uh?
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, let's move forward now.
Okay. Second for me is, you have in front of you the Northeast Counseling Services Contract Renewal. They're up for renewal. They have requested that there be no changes with the exception of, they would like to pay less rent, item number three. Just to have the messenger.
The ones that rent my house would like to pay less rent.
They would like to pay less rent and they would actually like to pay three hundred and fifty a month, which if you were so inclined, would be offset by the increase that you. which, if you were so inclined, would be offset by the increase that you have built into the Dennis's contract. The Dennis has an automatic build-in for an increase that happens to be exactly one hundred dollars. So the net to the county would be the same.
Now, what are we charging the Dennis?
You know how it's up to here? It's a, it's a graduated scale that I think every year it goes up.
It started at three fifty and goes up to four fifty, did you?
That's how much? Something like that, like two to three hundred, somewhere in that range. Like I said, it's a graduated scale with the intent of the commissioners, we're gonna give her a lot of latitude the first year or two to help get her business established. And as her business established, the rent would become closer to market value.
Plus she'd spent quite, quite a bit of money.
Exactly. She made quite an investment in our building.
Well, I don't see three fifty on my contract. I see four fifty.
Right, you have the original. This is, this is the current contract. They would like to keep everything the same except number three, where it says four fifty. They like to be that three fifty.
Do we know about their funding?
Funding.
They get state funding?
No, they're a private, it's a private business.
But they, they don't get any for the service that they're rendering?
I'm, I'm sure the client said they have Medicaid or Medicaid, Medicaid, Medicare folks, but it's not directly. It's the equivalent of a doctor's office that would get insurance reimbursement.
So far as we know, they don't get a subsidy of any type?
So how many square feet is this?
They are approximately one-third of the building.
And how many square feet is that?
I don't, I don't know either. I'd say in the six thousand foot range.
So they're getting a six thousand square foot building for four hundred and fifty dollars a month?
No, they're getting one-third of a six thousand square foot building.
Two thousand for four hundred and fifty dollars.
They're using what, two offices?
That seems like that's...
She has a small area. They have a, I believe, a common area that they share.
Johnny, don't let, don't let specify right here.
Where's that at?
On that very first...
Twelve hundred sixty-eight.
Uh, if I may...
Yeah, twelve sixty-eight.
Okay.
I wanted to ask Colleen, um, I, I know I just asked about their funding, but is there anything out there that you're aware of? 'Cause you sent clients there to them.
Well, we don't campaign. We let, let our clients know what services are available and, and where, uh, the client has to choose for themselves. No one can choose and Kristen will provide it. Uh, I know that Kristen has been well-received by Gates County. I know that people who do all her services have been satisfied, happy with them. You know, I, I've never, uh, never complained about the services that she provides to Gates County or about Gates River. At the same time, she's a for-profit, independent, private, non-hospitalist, and she does, she's a psychologist as well. So she's, it's a for-profit industry, but she's doing a good job at Gates County.
I talked to her last year. I know she was, they were having, last year was a pretty horrible, most all small businesses, I'm sure, that, that she was trying to keep it together and she was able, she had, at that time, she hadn't even taken a paycheck out of her business for several months. Y'all, y'all can, y'all can call them. My, my, I don't have a problem with reducing it for, for, for a year, but then again, I hate to...
What's county manager's recommendation?
My recommendation is you just reduce it. Either that or go to four hundred. It's gonna be a net neutral to your budget, so...
I really hate to put them out of business if, if that hundred dollars a month would help them stay in business.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if the board is gonna say that you're for economic development and for businesses in the community, you pretty much holding your hand whether the fact that there remains a mental health provider in your county or not.
So four, four hundred dollars a month is...
According to her, the meetings that Sandy and I've had with her, she, she is right at the break-even level and that this hundred dollars is gonna go a long way in keeping her in the county.
Well, twelve hundred dollars is gonna make it be successful. They're in trouble.
Would, would you close them down now?
No, wouldn't. I would, I would be looking for someone that would be more profitable. I mean, twelve hundred dollars, I, I mean, it's, it's true, but how long has this been in, uh, existence?
Two, three years, I think.
She's been longer than I've been here. She's been at least this old age.
So we've been in, doing this for three years at this?
No, we haven't owned the building that long. We've only owned the building for about a year, year and a half.
So how long they been paying this four fifty?
September tenth.
Since September tenth.
No, I, I mean, prior to this.
I don't know, 'cause we didn't own the building.
I, I don't know if they've been paying rent before.
They've been there before this, so, right?
Right.
Did this expire September eleventh, two thousand eleven? I mean, September first? When does this, when does this...
Yes, and I believe she's on a month-to-month now, right? There's a month-to-month in here that it's not renewed.
Did we budget five thousand four hundred dollars in our budget for her for this coming year?
We budgeted the, we have it together. That whole building is in one line. We did not budget the hundred dollar increase that was built into the Dennis. That was a oversight. So if you were to reduce that, it would be offset by that one hundred dollars in our current budget, and we would feel how impacted.
Now, what would her rent be next year?
Whatever you said about, and she agrees to. I mean, if you wanna do a multiple year, you can do, you could, just like you done with Dennis, you can do a multiple year with the build-in, built-in increase, if that's what you would prefer to do.
Well, I think four hundred and fifty dollars is, is a very reasonable for a viable business. I mean, I just, um...
I'm, I'm inclined, I'm sitting here thinking, uh, we own the building. One day, it's gonna need some updating. And, uh, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with Johnny that, uh, I think four hundred and fifty dollars is a fair, is a fair number. And I think I would, uh, I'd be inclined to, um, ask them to renew the contract as is.
All right, someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I've got a motion and a second to renew the lease agreement as at the same four hundred and fifty dollars per month. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign.
Okay. Final thing for me, you have in front of you a draft Alamo Regional Library Agreement. About five pages in is the current agreement, which are, where the Articles of Amendment. The intent is coming from the state level. The state is forcing the regional systems to have a uniform, uh, library agreement. This is, in fact, the Uniform Library Agreement. I'll tell you upfront, I have some issues with it, but this is what's being presented to you. The main issues I have are on page, one, two, three, four, five, I think it's five, Section Seven, provisions for withdrawal. I think it's poorly worded, and I think it exposes us to some things that if it was worded better, we would not be exposed to.
What, what part again?
Section seven, provisions for withdrawal, specifically Section A.
I didn't like that one.
Because the way this is worded, if, if a county gives notice before January first, it's effective, I mean, July first, it's effective on June thirtieth. So you could give notice on Jan, on June twenty-ninth, which is technically before July first, and then effective the next day.
Can we make any changes? This is a, a, a requiring changeable?
According to Gary Hall, if you make changes, it's gonna be a bureaucratic problem and it's gonna have to go back through the state and have to go back to each county that's already ratified, since this is gonna be one agreement.
How many counties have already ratified an agreement?
I don't know the answer to that question. But I believe we are somewhere in the middle. I think some have and some haven't yet. I can't give you a definitive number.
What's in effect right now?
What's in effect, I think, is a very poorly drafted agreement.
Is it this one, a certificate?
I think it's, yeah, I think it's the one you have attached, Certificate of, of Corporation, I believe is what we're governing by now.
Pat, you said, my, have you got any input on this?
Um, the input I do have is that, for the Alamo Regional, all of the counties, uh, counties have approved it as a fully certified county.
Okay.
I will, Gary agrees with COVID that it's not one that's written, but it's getting out from the state, so this is nothing to do with what we did before. I will say this, that our also individual county libraries systems in the state are a member of regional systems. We have four counties in our regional base, in the Alamo Regional. If we pulled out of the Alamo Regional, we would lose a whole lot, because the whole budget would come from Gates County. As it is now, we get state aid that helps us purchase books and some other items for the library, but this is, a lot of this is based on someone we received in. As a standalone library, we would not be able to receive in nearly a matter of that, a four-county, seven-library region can do. If we pulled out, everything that has been purchased through the years with regional money and state money would pull out with us and, and back to the region. So we would have, in essence, a, basically a shelfless, bookless, computer-less, video-less, library.
Not, not to interrupt Pat, but I, I, I don't wanna be misconstrued. I'm not advocating we pull out the regional system. Yeah, I, I am...
People understood our regional system.
Right.
And so the state is trying to make every, what, have you said it as a union, they don't want to be, but try to make a more, uh, saving off...
Un, a uniform system. Again, I'm not advocating you not sign this. Right, right. But what I am advocating is, is Section A is poorly written and if you're willing to sign it as is, I, I think that's perfectly fine. I just want you to do it with the full knowledge that Section A is poorly written and if someone decided to pull out, that there's gonna, there's potential for cost there.
I believe that is, uh, I'm willing to correct after, uh, what, uh, official is set.
Right. Well, there's, there's Gary now, and I, and I think the, I think the intent of the way it's written is you have to give notice before July one and it's effective the next June thirtieth. That's the intent of what they have written. It's just not written that way.
Is that six A?
Seven A, sir, provisions for withdrawal.
There's an awful, the next following July thirtieth, okay, I see.
It's just poorly written. I mean, that's the bottom line.
It goes from subsection seven to subsection seven?
Yeah, I missed that.
I mean...
I, I, I think as a board, you can completely pass this day and be fine. I just think you just need to be aware that there's some exposure here.
Well, uh, can you not get with him and, and, uh, discuss some of the changes?
I've already discussed with Gary, and Gary's now here and he can tell you, again, it's gonna be a bureaucratic nightmare to try to make a change, 'cause A, the state's gonna have to approve it, and then B, everyone that's already a signatory to this is gonna have to approve it.
Six or seven have already signed off on it, is that right?
Yes. Uh, actually, and as Toby, uh, and I had discussed earlier, and I had contacted the state library, it is how the administrative code reads, and I have no authority to change that. I don't know if Toby gave you a copy of the email that the state library sent to me?
I did. I'll just pass it to him.
But my mind is, it does take one year to get out the system.
What will be our cost to participate?
There's no changes, as you do now.
Deny it now?
No, uh, regional systems, everybody has their own contracts. Uh, I think we were originally formed in nineteen forty-eight and we did not address, of course, general statutes have changed since nineteen forty-eight. State has made all regional library systems redo their policies or their membership contracts. There's two regional systems that are dissolving because they did not operate with their own finance officer, which we've, we've already had in place ever since the region was formed. Uh, but those are also two systems that really did not need to be a regional system anymore. Gaston County, Leaking County, uh, there were, there's a couple in the Triangle area that dissolved as well to larger populated counties.
I, I think, I think I understood your question correctly. The issue would be, is if Bertie County, for example, is one of the signatories, decided on June thirtieth of one year, June twenty-ninth, that they wish to withdraw, they would give notice and could technically withdraw the next day. And instead of the budget for a regional system being divided by six in some form or fashion, it'd be divided by five, which would increase our amount there. That's how it costs us money.
But they would never get by with that, because they have to wait a year.
Right.
Gary, let me ask you something. I, I was noticing this last night and I was, it says that the board consists of twelve members. And I looked at this distribution here. How does Gates County get three and North Hampton three and Hurford County one?
There's three libraries in Hurford County. Each library...
They got one in Hocky, one in Mufflerborough, and one in Whitten. All three, they've got three members.
And so each library gets a representative. Bertie County has two libraries, Alllander...
So in other words, they say in Hurford County and Hocky and Mufflerborough make up the three?
Correct.
And then Alllander and the two, oh, okay.
Right.
That makes sense.
Well, gentlemen, it looks like we've got two choices, to accept it as is or drop out of the Alamo Regional Library. Does anybody wanna make a motion that we drop out of Regional Library?
Mr. Chairman.
All right, does anybody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion, we adopt this. We sign this agreement.
All right, do we have a motion on the floor that we sign agreement with the Regional Library Agreement? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
As presented.
As presented.
As presented. You'll second that, John?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign.
I think we do need to, Mr. Chairman, I, it's a draft, identified as a draft.
Correct.
The, the minutes should reflect acceptance of the draft.
I have the original.
You have the original. It's the same.
Same thing, already signed by six members.
They get, they need to change number, the seven to eight.
I think if we're gonna put things in the draft minutes, we may wanna put in there the acknowledgement that Gary has assured us that individual counties or entities cannot withdraw without the twelve-month, uh, provision.
I think they would be up to a lawsuit if they tried to do that.
Yeah, I'd like for our minister to reflect that assurance.
Uh, will y'all take a break? Don't mind, I'll wait around.
Give them about fifteen minutes, I think it'll be all right.
All right, that ends out with, uh...
That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, the next thing on our agenda is new business. Uh, I have a, uh, was been working with the Sunbury Fire Department over the last year. The agreement with the Fire, Sunbury, New Fund, Fire Department and the state was to, uh, pave the parking lot for certain, they were gonna supply funds for part of the parking lot. Uh, in the process of getting it done, Sunbury kinda went around the state, or they, the state actually changed their, um, specifics without the, the Sunbury knowing it, and it kinda got to a point where the state said they were not gonna allow the, the, uh, payment of the money or refund this, the, uh, Fire Department, the amount of money they had originally said. Uh, working with, uh, this, the Senator's office, Senator Jones's office, and Jerry Jennings and all the others at the state, and several phone calls, emails and all, they have agreed to pay the Sunbury Fire Department the amount of money that they had, or were originally promised. But the problem is they cannot put the money into the Sunbury's hands. It has to be done through the county. Uh, and they will, uh, will put the money in our hands and, uh, and we would disperse it to the Sunbury Fire Department. And we've got, if you look at the, uh, you should've had a copy of this here, it's signed at your seat. Basically, that's what this is saying. I don't know. We need to approve the receipt of this money and the, uh, the money being dispersed to the Sunbury Fire Department. Does anything you need to add on that, Toby?
I would, I would assume this is something the commissioners would wanna pass, and if you do make a motion, I, I'd ask that it, the motion be made with the presumption and not effective until we can verify that some of the statements in here actually occurred. For example, on page two, it says that the county or the Fire Department prepared the environmental and planning documents obtained, the per, environmental permits needed for the project. I would just be concerned about us signing a document attesting these events occurring without any assurance from Sunbury that they actually have occurred.
That's exactly what I've noted. I have eight things that I would like for the county manager to verify.
Let's compare notes, 'cause I've got mine here, too.
Okay, the first one...
Where'd you add, Henry?
All right, well, we'll, we'll start. The first one would be on page three, on the right of... The first one would be on page three, on the right away.
Okay.
Item six says, "The county or volunteer fire department shall identify and save harmless the department from any and all claims for damages that might arise on account of said, or said right-of-way acquisition and construction easements for the construction of said project." I would like for the county manager to have assurance that those right-of-way clearances have been identified and that they're okay.
Before we go in, let me, let me, uh, they had to show this all, and we, and I agree with, we need to make sure that they had to send all this stuff to the state before they would even approve this, uh, process. The Sunbury Fire Department had to put all this stuff together and send it to them to make sure it met their requirements, uh, upfront, that, just, just to, to tell you that, but we still gonna need to check on it.
Yeah, well, if, if, if you've got it, that's fine, all you gotta do is just
I didn't realize that we would have, that they would have to work through us on this.
Item seven, seven, uh, well, you got A, B, C, and then A again.
Right, all four of those, and later as well.
Yeah, and especially that last A, which is out of sequence. Where they talk about, uh, prior to final acceptance payment, the division engineer shall make a final inspection of completed work, the division engineer will be responsible for final acceptance of the completed work on behalf of the department, you know, is there a construction certification or anything?
Right.
And as you said, Mr. Chairman, that should, they probably got it, we just need to see it. Same thing with, uh, item under funding. Eight A, we need to take a look at that.
Which, which one is funded?
That's gonna be on page four. Especially the second sentence where it, it says reimbursement shall be made upon receipt of certified test results verifying depth and densities of stone and asphalt.
I know for a fact they had to get that.
And there again, you know, the county manager come back and say, hey, all these things are in place. Under B, I was a little bit concerned that, under the auditing requirements, the second sentence says, "The county shall furnish the department with a copy of the annual independent audit report within thirty days of completion of the report, but not later than nine months after the county's fiscal, uh, year ends." We don't know, we don't include them normally.
They're not a part of our audit, they would have to be audited as a separate, whatever they are, five oh one C, whatever. And I'm not, honestly have no direct knowledge whether they are or not audited, and if they're not audited, I'm not sure how we could comply with that. That's one of the ones I have noted as well.
Yeah, we, we need to, we need some kind of, uh, confirmation on how we're gonna move forward on that.
I don't know if they, um, the, uh, annual tax return, uh, which I'm sure that they're not having that audited, but, uh, I do the U L, and that's a five oh three, uh, C four, and, uh
Figure all the things out, I mean
Yeah, well, they, they should be, if they're not doing that. And I think they're almost required to now that the way the funds being dispersed.
Alright, the same thing with C. "The county shall maintain all books, documents, papers, accounting records, and such other evidence as may be appropriate to substantiate costs incurred under this agreement. Further, the county shall make such materials available at its office at all reasonable times during the contract period, and for five years from the date of final payment." We don't do that.
Nope.
So, I mean, you know, I'm, yes, we wanna go forward, but certainly we, we wanna make sure that
I, I, I agree with you, I have great concerns about some of the mandates that we are attesting to and are agreeing to without having direct conversations with someone in high ranking, Sunbury Fire Department.
I think that and, and the state, the state on this, Gary.
Yeah.
And, and especially D, where it says, "The county agrees that it, it shall bear all costs for which it is unable to substantiate actual cost." So, you know, those are, those are some of the issues, and the last one on page five, under item fourteen, it says, "The county and the volunteer fire department shall certify to the department compliance with all applicable state laws and regulations and ordinances, and shall indemnify the department against any fines, assessments, or penalties resulting from non-compliance by the county and or fire department, or any entity performing the work under contract with the county, uh, or volunteer fire department." I'd like to see, um, how are we gonna certify that? You know, just
I agree. You and I are in agreement on, on, on all these, and I have several more that you didn't pick up on or, or espouse here, but again, I, I'll say that I think this is something we should do to help Sunbury Fire Department. I would just be very, I, I would adamantly state that any motion to approve this needs to include some language that until we have these issues rectified, it might be effective.
I would rather wait until we find these answers out before we approve it, this has been a one, over a year process, working with them, even getting them to come off with the fact that we paid them, you know, give them the money. So another month or so, it won't make that much difference.
True.
Well, you wanna bring that back to us tonight, maybe?
Uh, yeah, if not, they make, if they were.
Probably need to wait till February, we got a lot of stuff going on between now and then.
Alright, well
I just really was basically making y'all aware of, of this, that we had this, we were going this far with it, trying to get the funds that were promised to Sunbury Fire Department.
Sure, and we wanna do that, uh, you know, I'd be willing to make a motion to table it, uh, pending, uh, county manager bringing, uh, responses to the concerns with the contract identified, uh, during discussion.
Let me understand this, Matt, because my understanding was it was a pass-through from the county to the Sunbury Fire Department, correct?
Pretty much so, yeah.
Now, the thing, and when I was reading that too, Henry, I'm back to five years, is that if we do all this within six months, the five years is still putting us at exposure?
Like, like every grant, just about every grant we get into, it's gonna have a language in it that says you have to keep doc, supporting documentation for up to five years, unless you're audited, and if you're audited, until the audit is resolved. That's, that's what that language does, it's just
That's fine if it's just about keeping the documentation, but you know, what, um, that, let's see, that all the procedures were followed to make it to this point that we transferred the funds to them, and we keep those documents for five years. But let's say something happened outside the scope of those procedures. And that kinda opens us up for five years, is that what we're saying?
Well, yeah, see, my, my understanding is, is that the money's already spent, the state is gonna give us money back, give the Fire Department money back.
Through us.
Through the county for what's been spent.
What they've already done.
What's already been done.
Hitting.
This is, this is like money, it's like grant money coming in.
It's like a reimbursement.
What, what, based on what in the world?
What happened was, they, they did, they did this job, just like that when they built the Corpiet Fire Department. Everything, all the paperwork was done just like that, the state changed their requirements for them to give this money, which included all these, um, contracting forms, and they had, and then when, when they went in, put in the application to get the money, they told me they couldn't give it to them because they hadn't done it this way. But they hadn't told them how to do it upfront.
Well, the, the, the problem with it is, is that once they give the Fire Department the money, if we don't meet these conditions, or they come and audit, we're gonna have to give the money back.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I, I think some news from the Fire Department and, and from the state, before we sign off on this, I mean, I wanna make sure we get it, you know, but we don't wanna, um, put our liabilities up for us.
Okay, I understand what you wanna know from the Fire Department, what do you wanna know from the state? So I can talk to Jerry.
Talk to Jerry, cause they, you know, these are theirs, this comes from them, and they may already have all this information.
You wanna know what the state already knows as far as this?
And this is a standard, uh, uh, reimbursement agreement that they would do with every county in this process. Originally, they'd done it, would have done it with the Fire Department, but in the process, they changed that, they won't, don't do with the Fire Department, they have to deal with the county on it now.
Well, I, I, I would think that he would also wanna ask the state on page four, items B and C, you know, what are their expectations? Clarify what their true expectations are for, for the county accountability of these reports when they come in and audit.
And maybe a letter or email from the signature on what they expect and, and all that, so we'll have some
Because we need to include them in our audit and, and, uh
I cannot imagine we would take on a, a separate nonprofit as responsible for part of our audit.
It was twenty-five thousand dollars, the amount of money that we're dealing with here.
Yeah, but they, you know, they're, they're invoking the same audit criteria, so
Oh, yeah, no, I agree, I agree, I, I think the answer is they need to be separately audited, and we need to be provided a copy of it, that's the answer.
Alright, do you wanna make that as a motion to table, or just, uh? He had made a motion, okay. We, we have, nobody, we got a motion on the floor to table this until the county manager comes back, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jack's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign. Alright, that's the last one. Yeah, yeah, I see that. Next one here, we've got citizens' comments for the second time. I've got Ed, Ed's already gone, Anthony, did you wanna make your second comment? Here's the list right here, William, William, you wanna put your name on it? I know you come in late, I already had the list. Alright, Anthony, uh, welcome back again.
Thank you. At the last meeting that I was at, there was a comment that was made about speed limits in certain areas that either needed to be, that they probably had to be reduced or added. And, um, I got a list of eleven different roads up here, I don't know if you wanna go through all of them today or not.
We've got the list, if you just wanna, just go over what, and we'll, we'll, we'll forward the list on to, uh,
Okay.
the highway department.
The first one is the road I live on. Even though it's marked forty-five miles per hour, we still have vehicles that are not following that speed limit. In fact, that's a, you know, heavily, you know, housing area, you got pedestrians, you got children, pedestrians, everything else up there. And it's still not being followed, I'm thinking, you know, if there's a way that we can like, drop it down a little bit more than what it is now.
Well, we, we can request, just request it to the, uh, state, and they would do a study on it, and, and look at each one of them, and go from that point on.
Okay. The next one is, um, Hill Lane Road. Maybe that could be dropped down to forty-five. Hackley Road. Probably the same. And, uh, when you're coming down one thirty-seven, entering a forty-five zone, I think the thirty-five should start right there where the forty-five is at. Hales Road, I talked to two people down there who lives down there, and they like see thirty-five down there. That's, you know, inside of your Hales Church Road, you know, it's heavily, it's got houses, you know, children and stuff, maybe forty-five. Turner Road, you know, you got, you know, curves and stuff, and houses, and it leaves maybe forty-five. Gatlington Road, a lot of sharp curves and stuff down there, maybe that needs to be dropped down to, you know, forty-five. Fort Island Road, I don't know if y'all familiar with that area, not been down there before. That also probably needs to be dropped down to forty-five due to the curves and everything. Ballfield Road, there's no speed limit down there, but it's got houses and it's got children out there. And Corner High Road, you got the, the curves, you got the children, the houses and stuff down there, it needs to be dropped down to the least, you know, forty-five also.
Alright. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Uh, gentlemen, uh, would y'all like to, for the, you know, to just put a letter, to have the county manager put a letter together, sending these roads, these names to the, uh, highway department for a study on speed limits?
Mr. Chairman, it's been my, it's been my experience, uh, from times I've been coming to the meetings and, um, and, uh, prior to being a commissioner, that, um, the state has a strict policy, and a lot of conditions on how they, uh, do that. I, I think we would be, uh, i- if we sent a, a letter with this many roads on there, I'm afraid, uh, they would look at it as a blanket request, and it might not get as much attention.
I think the whiteout road has already been changed, right? That was reduced to forty-five.
I think that was something that Wade, Wade
Wade, Wade championed that, and we, I know we sent a lot for that, they did a study on that.
Would it be, um, would a better scenario be maybe having, um, the county manager, you know, we have somewhat of a relationship with Jerry Jennings and, and have a conversation with him, and see what his dialogue on it would be?
I have no problem with that, just to make him aware that, so a citizen has a concern. I think, uh
I'd like to make that suggestion.
There was, there was a couple from, uh, um
I've already talked to them about them with Commissioner Nickens.
Okay.
What was the response on that?
I talked to them about the, uh, original ones around, um, trash dumps, and that's pretty much, they, they called me back and said they didn't see no sense in making any changes, that's why I talked to them about that.
I, I, I'd like to recommend that, uh, county manager have another conversation with Jerry Jennings in regard to the request from Anthony.
Okay. Alright, uh, let's see. William, did you, William, you wanna think, or did you just? You probably need to be, be more informed when you, after you sit with Timmy a little while on, on that
We've talked about some of, some of it, I'm not quite understanding. It may be coming out like I want, but don't see it. Alright, you, you got your paper, right, y'all have a chance to look over it.
Uh-huh.
Price is pretty close to what I estimated, just off the top of my head. Okay, the price of the pipe, as you see, is a dollar fifty-five a foot, that's today's price. It can go up, it can go down, we all know that. Alright, everything else is pretty well in line. Where are we on this at this time?
Right now, when we come back, is that policy, are we gonna change that policy or not change the policy, I think?
I wonder.
Okay, my question is, is about the engineer drawing. I was told by Alan Keith, which is in Raleigh, that it was estimated to be fifteen hundred, no more than that. It may be nine hundred, you know, I'm hoping it's gonna be cheaper due to, this is a simple project, there's nothing there. We're not crossing any houses, we're not crossing any water lines, sewer lines, nothing. There's only one private phone line. And, you know, seriously, to me, I'll cut it in two and pay for fixing it, it's cheaper to do that than the word we're trying to find it. But it don't cost her about a hundred bucks, but we'll, we'll, we'll get it marked by utility regardless. And, you know, the tie-in is pretty simple, four inch, cause talking to Timmy, this S D R twenty, two fourteen, two twenty-one, four inch pipe is what they want to be compatible with the county, so all their fittings that are in stock are comparable. Of course, the pipe that I had, uh, presented before was a more expensive pipe, it's a thicker grade. Cause I mean, that's the way I do things, top of the line, and this is a cheaper grade pipe.
I think, I think, William, if I can, if I can help you a little bit, we didn't really discuss so much the pricing of anything, we know that
No, I mean, I know, we just estimated before in the first meeting
Right.
what it was gonna cost. But, I mean, anyway, what I was saying about the pipe, that was a high, high-priced pipe, and, you know, since then, when Timmy and I talked, this was the pipe that they used, you know, for the county. It was comparable, cause the thicknesses, water pipe is measured by inside diameter. Of course, the thicker the pipe, that makes the outer diameter larger for the fittings, and it won't, it won't fit. That's what I'm trying to say, do y'all understand that?
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, I think that, I think that this, discussion where we are right now as a board, is that the policy that we want to put in place specifies that the applicant will have to, uh, upfront the cost of the project, and pay for the engineering drawings.
Okay, so you, you want me to pay for the engineer drawing, or I, I'm gonna hire this guy myself?
Well Well,
I mean, is that what you want me to do? Because that's not a problem.
Well, the, 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 the thing of it is, is that the way the policy is written, we would have to change the policy to say that, uh, the applicant would pay the upfront cost or provide all costs to implement or, or to make the installation under the supervision. And, and, and that's what we don't have in the current policy.
Oh, oh. You're not referring to the policy I drafted.
Well, even the one that you revise.
He's talking, originally told me that the one that's already there is right.
Well, even the one that you revise does not have provisions, uh, uh, for providing all the labor and materials themselves versus paying the county the, the, the cost of it. In other words, that's not clearly spelled, spelled out. I was just looking for my copy, but, but, uh, that's what we would have to change. Uh, so my question would be, uh, Timmy says this project costs eighty-five hundred dollars, you, you saying that it's, it's, it's ten, ten?
Well, that's, that's not the true price.
If you look at that, that was just an example as how the cost sharing would work.
I, I actually, just to give y'all, I actually talked to William and asked him to put a quote together, what he would do to this project.
Well, but the thing about it is, everything seems to be included except the engineering drawing. And mine is a conversation with you.
The price of that's in there.
In the last, in this example.
The only thing that is, that is not in there is due to, we do not have a drawing now, because you have to have a drawing to specate materials that's needed to do this job. And we're assuming a four-inch valve and a blow-off at the end. And, you know, I don't know what that stuff calls.
Just those two things, William?
Mm-hmm.
Just those, the blow-off and the, and four-inch?
That's the only thing that's excluded in this project. And I, I mean, I even got concrete in there to put at the end of the line for a thrust block.
Tim, you got a number for the two, the valve and the blow-off?
If this project goes through, I'm going to take the existing blow-off and relocate it at the end. It's silly to have two blow-offs nine hundred forty foot apart.
So it wouldn't be a blow-off, there'd just be a?
There would be no cost, there'd just be, cut a line and tie it in together, so it'd roughly be, what, a two hundred dollar cost for a mechanical joint?
Probably.
And then the valve, I believe, for the four inches, six hundred and something dollars?
We, here, we, we, when we closed up on this issue earlier today, uh, here's what we were trying, so what we're doing is, we're not just looking at your situation. We know that this issue, when it comes up again, we have to be consistent, and that's something I had talked to you about. And so we, not that we dislike what Timmy did, but we wanted to get, because we have a current situation with you, we wanted to get your perspective on what Tim had drawn up. And, and that's what we instructed him to do, and now we're here at this point. So it wasn't really about money, even though money has, does come into play. We're not scrutinizing the numbers that you gave us, in fact, they're pretty, they're really close, so, so that's a good thing. But, um, again, what we're going to do, what we wanted Tim to come back with, was to show you his plan. And as a citizen with a contractor's license, how did you, we were trying to get a new perspective from a citizen who was actually a citizen in need of how the new, um, policy, if we adopted it, would apply to your situation.
How you could work within it.
Right.
And still accomplish what you're trying to do at a no cost. I mean,
We, we want to put something into place that we had to change.
If, if, if it's ten thousand dollars, the way that the, our process-
The way you're going, if you, if you hold on for a second, I can break that down for you, because we talked about it outside earlier. We'll just say, this eighty-five hundred, that actually started off as a ten thousand dollars minus fifteen hundred engineering fee. If you go through the breakdown of the way this cost sharing is, the total responsible from the inquiring party, William and the other ones, in, in, own Roundtree Lane, out of this fifty-two hundred dollars that they would have to pay out of pocket, with William donating labor, which if you look on his quote, the labor is three thousand nine hundred ninety dollars.
That's workers' comp and everything.
That, that covers everything. So you take that three thousand nine hundred ninety dollars away from the fifty-two hundred.
Call it four thousand.
All right, then if you took that tobacco expense?
That's what I'm coming up with.
Uh, what I, what I'm saying is, if you can put a backhoe there, we don't have to put one there. You'll, you'll probably can figure, if you did this, just say this project, you'd have to have a backhoe there. So you'd have labor plus tobacco expense could be backed out of that money too, the way I would see it.
That's already been backed out. That's already been backed out.
So William, out of this ten two eighty-five, can I subtract out to thirty-nine ninety? Can I subtract out to fifteen thirty? And can I subtract out to sixteen forty-five?
And then what does that leave?
Four thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. That's really material cost is all that is.
That's all material?
Yes. And the drawing.
And the drawing. And then where are we?
I'm at four thousand one hundred and, I'm, I'm asking you, are you donating, you donating labor and equipment?
Yeah.
So that's a donation of, uh,
Fifteen thirty.
Yeah, fifteen thirty, uh, sixteen forty-five and thirty-nine ninety.
Right.
So now, that's four thousand one hundred and eleven dollars. And I'm back to my one dollar.
Well, that's for another day, I think.
Now, another thing that I see here, you know, is not really misleading, maybe I misinterpreted it. He's got up here a total discount, discount for, from taps on fees. Okay, that was something that was discussed, that being that my equipment is on the site, that when this line is being put in, uh, the county does not have to supply any equipment. All he has to supply is and materials and we'll make the taps. And see, what you're doing is, you're giving me a discount on a water meter. I didn't ask for that. You know, I, I offered to pay for my meters and the other people upfront. I mean, I got money in my pocket right now to do it.
So William, how many water meters can you guarantee me right now you'll pay for?
I can guarantee you two
Two.
of my own. The third one, which if you remember the first drawing at the meeting
So fifteen hundred dollars.
was due to a purchase of a piece of land, which hasn't acquired.
So you're ready to put fifteen hundred dollars?
I can put fifteen hundred dollars on you right now.
Okay.
Well, that's the thing.
And far as David's concerned, you know, he's speaking for his son, they'll do theirs. Mister Duck isn't here, I can't, I ain't going to speak for somebody that's not here.
Well, if we got the fifteen hundred dollars, we would get the engineered plans drawn up.
In other words, I'm paying, what I'm trying to say is, I'm gonna pay for my meters upfront to show you that I'm gonna do this.
Sounds good to me.
And, uh, I'm sure he will too. Now, is that enough to cover for the drawing? And like I said, this guy Alan Keith, he estimated a top of fifteen hundred. He said because he didn't know how in-depth it was going to be. And then another fellow, which y'all I think know him, Bill Deal, I'll show on county that represents this county on this stuff. He's supposed to come over, assess this situation on Roundtree Lane to see how in-depth it is. Which of course, we all know is nothing. It ain't what about two thousand acres of farmland back there? I mean, it's nothing.
But what about the right-of-way?
Well, the right-of-way is, that's what the engineer is supposed to do, he's supposed to find that.
Yeah, and, and according to the, the flat maps and what I've seen with the last lot on the road, the state of right-of-way, or the, the state's right-of-way, state maintained right-of-way goes all the way up to the corner of the last lot.
Okay, so that's, that's not it.
The right-of-way, he's fine with the right-of-way from what investigation I've done and what I've seen.
But have that proved, that's, that's what the engineers is supposed to do in the drawing. He'll contact the state and they'll verify it. That, that's what you're paying for.
I, I think what we, it sounds like the changes to the policy would, would be something to the effect that, the contract would provide the cost or equivalent. Add, add something to that effect, which allows him to do what, you know, they give you the fifteen hundred or, you know, get the engineering drawings so they can be submitted to Deener, and allow you to move forward in doing the construction and, you know, all, all of the, uh, uh, putting in the system itself. But, um, we would have to amend, amend this to recognize that they would not be giving you the cost of the project, but giving you an equivalent, the cost or equivalent to move forward in that. That, that's what, that's what I see we would need in order to, to be able to address it. It sounds like that you're willing to, to, to take on the cost and, and, um,
With looking at this proposal that I presented, it looks like the fifty-two hundred out of pocket is, is going to be right much expense out of the inquiring parties.
Well,
Well, in this unique situation, with what he's donating, this really is very minimal excess expense out of his pockets over top of the tap fee. So I mean, it, it-
Somewhere, somewhere I've gotten lost in this situation.
Seven thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars of contribution here.
That, well, that's where, what I'm seeing here is, is this cost, and he, he, he bid the job, to do the complete job, except for the two valves, at ten thousand two, two eighty-five. And if, if you started that same point right there that you had, which was, I think you said, if you take that eighty-two, uh, fifty-two plus everything, it was eighty-five hundred start with, plus you had fifteen hundred drawn, which is, that would be ten thousand dollars. So we're right on the same starting point. All right, and you, you're, if you, if you take the discounts down from the meters and, and fifteen hundred dollars for payment, whatever that is, the, the, uh, that does not take any of the labor or anything out of it. The fifty-two hundred dollars, it looks like to me, he furnished, he would furnish the labor that would pay that different, that fifty-two hundred dollars with his labor and machinery. It would be a ton of wash, the way I see it.
The engineer's fee and the material.
With what William has just said.
Discounts.
Well, see, see what I'm seeing is, the way he's got it wrote up, if you take the discount, the three hundred dollars per meter, don't that more than cover the drawing? I mean, it's just the way the numbers are arranged.
Well, and that, that's the thing right here, if you look at what we're talking about, three thousand nine hundred ninety dollars, sixteen hundred and forty-five dollars, fifteen hundred and thirty dollars, that's a contribution of seven thousand one hundred and sixty-five. And you just told me you were willing to put fifteen hundred dollars on the table now. That's eight thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars cash, basically.
Now, the question is, what do you want me to do? Do you want me to guarantee that we're going to do this project by paying for the meters? Or do you want me to pay for the drawing? And be, be reimbursed out of the meters? Because that's the way this policy is written. By the way I'm understanding it.
It looks like to me that would be, if we, if we go with that policy, it will work in the, in this situation. And it should work within this situation. Don't you see that, Timmy, or am I seeing something completely wrong?
Well, my, my thing about the credit here, I mean, if you're-
That's, that's not really a credit. What's this, what this is doing is taking the money that you're going to have to pay regardless whether this project, if the water line was already there.
Mm-huh.
Money that you have to pay out of pocket regardless. I'm discounting and pulling labor out of that, and then discounting revenues from this line, revenues that would come in anyhow. I'm using that revenue that would come in, whether the project was done or whether the main was already there. I'm using the revenue and the money that you were already going to pay, taking the labor out of it, to create, so you're not paying for the same thing twice. That, that's, that's how that rea, that's the reason it's, it's, it says discount.
I think, I think-
He's trying to, he's trying to also calculate for us a break-even point.
Well, I think what, what we've got here is, if we've got a ten thousand dollar job roughly, if you add the valves, which probably another, what, four hundred dollars, about ten, seven. All right, if you weren't a contractor and you had, you want to do this job project, and you weren't, weren't a contractor, and the way Timmy's got it figured, you would get the same, this job for fifty-two hundred dollars that you would put upfront, plus the fifteen hundred dollars, if you weren't going to do it yourself. Right, if you, if this is your property, you're going to put this line in, you're going to pay the county to put in nine hundred feet of line. The way Timmy's got it figured, you wouldn't pay the total cost, you would pay fifty-two hundred dollars, or whatever it was.
Why did I have to put up fifty-two hundred upfront?
If you weren't doing it. That, you're, you're a contractor, and we're looking at something different.
Well, that's, see, that's the way the policy is saying it. The policy is that, that-
I mean, I'm, I'm putting up the label, I'm putting up-
William.
But, yeah, but we're at a different point here.
This is getting confusing to me.
Well, that's why I'm saying it needs to be, you need to add a word in there, that you'll pay the cost or the equivalent. Equivalent cost will be provided.
I can add one line that states that, but this is an extremely unique situation. How many times is a contractor going to come to us and say, hey, I want to run a new water line down the surface of the lot?
Well, that, that's, well, I think that's what I'm trying-
Policy for everybody to use, not for this unique situation.
Timmy, that's what I, that's why I'm trying to get across to William. As if he was not a contractor and he was trying to do this in another part of the county.
Right.
You've got a policy now where he, he could go out and hire a contractor, if he could get it done for forty-two thou, a thousand, forty-two hundred dollars or fifty-one hundred, whatever you had to hire a contractor to do this project for, the county, the county would do it for fifty-two hundred dollars. Because you would pay everything else out. See, what, what, well, let's back up.
Well, that's, that's-
What, what I was asked to do,
I don't think it puts a lawsuit-
Graham and I talked, of course, his phone kept cutting off and we never finished some of the conversation and, but anyway, he asked me to present a proposal as if I had nothing to do with this. As if you guys came to me, maybe Toby came to me and said, William, you're a licensed general contract class A. We want you to propose to do this job because you live here in the county.
That's what I-
That's what I did. Now exempt the fact that I have any association with this paper. I presented it, now I'm me standing up here trying to get it done.
So William, if the county paid you ten thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents, would you get this done?
Yeah, I'd get it done.
The whole part.
Now, would you take, would you give me back?
Other than the valves?
Now, would you give me back fifty-two hundred dollars? Would you be willing to give me fifty-two hundred dollars out of that ten two eighty-five?
Well, the only thing I see that I have to give back at this time would be the label.
Well, well, now that, fifty-two hundred, let's add to thirty-nine ninety, to fifteen thirty, to sixteen forty-five, you already given me more than that if I go the other way.
Well, he wouldn't give you fifty-two hundred dollars back unless we done the job. If, if he didn't do the job and the county did the job, he would pay fifty-two hundred dollars to get the job done. But what I'm saying is, by him doing the job, it should balance itself out, so it shouldn't cost
Well, it did.
him or the county anything.
That's what it just did. Ten thousand two eighty-five minus fifty-two is five thousand dollars.
Keep in mind, you're also gaining a service from this project.
Well, I, I, I- Well, you, what you're gaining, huh, in, in due time-
Four different directions, I really do.
You're, you're gaining the water meter income and you're gaining, well, the county is, the taxes on the two houses proposed to go up on my, my lots, which is already surveyed and been recorded.
I think where Commissioner Horace is going is the fact that why not the county
How are you?
put it in themselves and spread the cost across, across the, the citizens of the county.
Well, originally, that's the way it should be.
Well,
And I agree with that.
I mean, the whole thing.
Yeah, but then, you know, whoever decides they wanted the extension to the county would be kind of obligated to do that. But I, I, I go back to what I originally said, is that, uh, to make the provision to accommodate this situation, I don't think, uh, is unfair or showing partiality to any of the other citizens, because if another citizen wanted to extend the water line and they could come up with the cost or the equivalent, they could do the same thing. And you just said you could add, you could add words in there to take care of that. And we may not use this for one time. This may be the only situation, we'll use it in the next forty years. And we all probably won't be here, but, but, uh, uh, Toby.
I probably can second that one, Anna.
But, uh,
I'll be here.
Or fifty years. But it would allow, it would give the provision to accommodate those unique situations where if someone had the expertise and the certification, they could do it. But if they didn't have it, then they would have to, uh, pay those costs to the county.
That, that, that's what I'm, I'm seeing right here, is, is, is if you didn't have a contractor to do it, you would pay fifty-two hundred dollars to the county. And that's a share, share, a share cost. But you do, so it's, it'll come down to a point where you'll clear, it'll clear out completely, because you're donating the labor and the, the equipment and everything, which would take up to fifty-two hundred dollars, which in this project would be probably a little bit more.
Okay, well, we're talking pennies now. All right, so what you're saying is, if this somebody else wrote this, like, I didn't do it, somebody else did it and put it up for y'all to have something to go by. Okay, uh, you're going to move forward with it?
If you give Timmy fifteen hundred dollars for the-
And the fifteen hundred dollars is for what? Two meters?
Well,
He, he's got to get the plans, it's, all this has got to be submitted to Deener and, uh, be approved before you could even put, you can't break ground.
I understand that.
Right, so, so the cost.
And then, then the fifteen hundred dollars will be referred back to him and meter, him and whoever pays it, I would, would think. I mean, he's buying, you're talking about buying two meters, is that right?
Yeah, well, that's all I can, that's all the lots I have at this time.
We see the share in the fifteen hundred dollars upfront would be, you would say you put it up front, then I reckon refund would come from, your two meters plus the other meters that get put on.
And that, that's for the meters.
Well, the refund part of the policy, let's go back to the policy now, that's, that's where we're.
You've got provisions in there for that. So, but the key would be, you'd have to have the money upfront. Now, whereas the county, the county would not be taking the laws.
I understand that. That's what I said all along. If we put up the money for the meters, so you'll see that we're sincere about moving forward with the project, you'll take care of the rest.
I think it's the same thing as the, the money for the engineering drawings instead of the meter.
We can't put money for, for meter installs if the state hasn't approved it through engineer drawings.
I think you'd be paying the engineering drawings.
Put up, or what is, what is qualified for, just before we can do anything, we have to have drawings for the project.
Yeah, let me, because the, because. So theoretically, what you're saying is, I'm gonna put the fifteen hundred dollars up for two meters, that if it gets shot down, you're gonna give it back to me. Now, whereas if the project don't get approved, cause I'm buying a meter for a water line that's not there, to show you that I'm willing to put money up, to show you that we're sincere about doing this. But you're gonna use the money to start the engineer drawing.
Yeah, I think that would be the trade.
Is that what you're saying?
That would be the trade off. I, I mean, you know.
Now, what are we currently doing?
Well, if we, if we go through the part of getting the drawings, to submit them to get approved, that's the risk the county is taking for, for the citizen. We're doing this to try to accommodate the citizens. Now, suppose Deaner comes back and says, no way are you gonna put a water line here. For whatever reason, you know, this soil is, is, for some reason, is, is, is not gonna accommodate it, it's too silky or whatever. Well, at that point, we've, the county has incurred a cost to accommodate, uh, a request. And I think when we go into this, we need to go into it with upfront, that, that that is the risk that the citizen, the applicant has taken to, that, you know, if for some reason it doesn't go through, then those costs are borne by the, by the, by the citizen.
Well, in there also, the scenario, and I hope it doesn't apply here, but just because you hire an engineer, doesn't mean that the results are gonna be what you want them to be. The engineer could come back and say, the state right of way ends right here. Well, wherever it ends is where we'll stop at. That ain't a problem. If it's five hundred feet, we'll stop there. I, I just wanna put that out there, so we have that on tape. I mean, we, we keep building more into this than is now.
I think, I think the policy will work like, I'm, I see the policy working like it is. Just other than making that, that, that little provision.
I mean, that's what, that's what the engineer drawing is for, to.
Yes.
To, to put in writing where the state right of way is and where it stops, and then that governs what we propose to do here. Nine hundred and forty feet is an estimation according to he and I, and where the grade or grades and stops at.
Well, i- if it goes down less than, less than that, you're, you're, you know, the cost of this goes down.
That's right, it just goes down footwise.
Percentage wise, you still, if the policy works, it works for five hundred feet or a thousand feet. I mean, it works. And it looks like, I just, I can't see it not working for anybody that needs, I just can't see it.
Percentage wise, openly, the shorter the distance, the lower the cost.
Yeah, I, I think it's workable, and, you know, just understand the risk that you're taking and risk, you know, the county's taking and going into it. Once you're satisfied with that, I think we can move forward.
Well, alright, that's what I'm looking to do, cause it's twenty-some degrees outside right now, y'all done put me in freezing cold trying to put it in.
It'd be sixty, sorry.
Oh, alright. So, I mean, what I wanna know is, is you give me a contract, what I'm supposed to do. I didn't give you a contract, what it costs, you tell me how I gotta move forward in a formal way. You go, you gonna put it in my hands to call this fellow and hire him, and I'll send him a check? Is that money coming back to me? Tell me what, tell me what has gotta be done. You know, I don't want it by verbal, I want it in writing.
I think you need.
Let's go to the policy. Now, if we approve the policy, how the policy goes is how it goes back.
Timmy, you're gonna need.
And that should.
Cost of the engineering drawings.
The way that policy was written up was that cost of engineering drawings is the way of the acquiring party to invest into the project.
That's the start, just like he's saying, buying the meters.
Trigger start, and according to the policy and the way it was written, that is the acquiring party's responsibility, and it's not incurred in the call share.
So, he's willing to buy two meters, but it's, instead of buying two meters, he's gonna buy engineering, which is fifteen hundred or nine hundred, or whatever happens to be. Now, does he have to use the engineer that we require him to do, or would, would, could he, this fellow he talked to, I mean, it's.
Well, the fellow I talked to is who was recommended by the water department.
Okay, alright.
And the way the policy is written, if you read through it, it says that the engineering drawing has to be done and conducted by the county approved engineer, which is the one that, that does all of our.
William, why don't you give him fifteen hundred dollars and let him get the engineer?
And it, and there's a chance, like you said, it could only be nine hundred.
Well, see, I don't have a problem with that. My, my problem is, is the guy told me a maximum of fifteen hundred dollars estimated, he said it could be cheaper.
When he presents the bill.
If the bill is nine hundred, you gonna give me the remainder back?
Yes, sir.
I would think.
Not well, no.
It would be worked out in this price, the, the cost, the cost of the drawing, where.
I mean, I didn't get in life where I am by being stupid. I'm worth two or three million dollars.
No, you getting two meters, but the fifteen hundred dollars cash, he's buying the, the, uh, engineering drawing.
The policy, we gotta get back to the policy, not just the meters or the drawing. If you buy, the policy is fifteen hundred dollars, whatever it is. If you contact him and you, you order the draw and you pay him nine hundred dollars, you bring the bill back to Timmy, and it goes into the, the calculation is, is where I see it happening. You said fifteen hundred dollars, but that's not the cost of, or might not be the cost of everyone. That's just an example.
Well, see, the, no, the example is what we discussed. I mean, by words of mine, from, uh, this fellow Alan Keith, what I say? Yeah, uh, that's what he and I spoke on the phone, see, cause when this first started, uh, I was told by Timmy to call Bill Deal, which is in Chauvin County. I spoke with him, we discussed it, and from there, he told me to call Keith Allen. Alright, and then I called him, and then we at this point, and then I commenced, I called Kenny Jernigan, we discussed it, he was all for moving forward. Then I called Jack, Jack took the time to come out and meet with me personally on the site, and I believe David talked to you, Graham, and you went out. Of course, you were familiar with the area, and then Mr. Henry Jordan, I spoke with him also, I, and, and then Johnny, I spoke with every one of you at different times.
Well, I think where we're at now is we got the policy. The policy will work for this, and if it worked for this, it'll work for anybody. So what we need to do is approve the policy with the, the changes, the, the way I see it.
Yeah.
And, and put that in place, and then from that point, Timmy and we can work out the, 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 you know, go ahead and order whatever it needs to do to the project for.
Yeah.
That, that's easy part of it.
You would have to come up with, with the cost of the engineering drawings, that's the starting point.
Well, that's, that's something that's unknown until it's done. I mean, he, he's not gonna give me a contract price on it, he's gonna give me a estimate on it.
Well, he, he already gave you a maximum of, of, of fifteen hundred.
He said a maximum of fifteen hundred.
Okay.
In case it could be cheaper, but, uh, it's been a while, what, December when I talked to him, uh, when this first started. And I mean, he, he basically told me there was a lot of hoops you had to jump through the state. These drawings had to be presented to the state department, it had to go to, uh, five or six different places, it had to be signed and come back. He said it was all an easy process, but it was time consuming. And once it got back to him, everything was approved, he could move forward. Alright, it's just a timely thing.
Well, I think once the project's complete, uh, I think Timmy should be able to authorize, you know, any refund at, at that time.
Well, it would be figured in this, this, this bottom line cost there.
I mean, basically what you're asking me is to put the money up front and get it going. I'm willing to do that. That's not a problem.
That's what we're saying right now.
And if I put the fifteen hundred dollars up for the drawing, or when I call this guy, if he wants a partial payment, I'll write a check and send it directly to him, get it moving. I mean, cause I'm gonna deal direct with him.
I don't, I don't.
I think, I think you need to work with Kenny.
That's fine, to deal directly.
I don't see a problem with, with.
Then I'll present the bill, you know, to you guys, and we'll go forward from there.
Give it to Timmy, and then he'll work, the, the, with the, with the pro- process of what the cost is. It's, it's simple, it's not that hard.
Let's just pass it today and move on.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get done, right now.
Cause I mean, that's costing me a lot of money being in here, I got a little thing to do.
If you make a motion, just make a motion with, with the stipulations of the verbi- verbiage being added, or.
That it would be.
Part of the money or equivalent.
That, uh, the proposed water main extension cost will be paid prior to the start of construction or the equivalent necessary payments. That way.
And that, that sentence, if I'm not mistaken, can be added?
Well, it, it starts on that sec- under appendix A, under that third, uh, item, under the fourth item, but, um. Let's look on page one.
The, the appendix A with the call share, the last section before it goes into the call share example. If I'm not mistaken, the verbiage can be added right there, where it says, um, the acquiring party or parties will pay the public utility director their portion of the expenses. And/or the equivalents of that expense, and the public utility will oversee the financing of the water main extension.
Okay, that's.
That's fine, I, I, I think that's fine. Alright, do I have a motion that we accept this change?
Well.
Did you write that down, Timmy?
I got it.
I think we need to get, get it down.
Well, I don't wanna stop. I'm for the project, and I'm not, I don't like the way this is written, so I'm not for the language in the document there.
Well, he's saying he's gonna modify it. He's saying he's gonna modify it.
Well, let's approve getting it done, getting it done, and do that later after it's modified.
We, we're gonna have to prove this before we can get this done. Unless it's the upfront, the upfront money all the way through.
Well, the original document here, well, he's basically doing that.
Yeah, I mean, the only money that, that's, that you gotta have is water pipe and, and, uh, a drawing. The rest of it's on me anyway.
Well, if we're gonna pay you, it's not.
What, what sentence was that? That sentence, do you, a modification?
Uh, appendix A, the last section before it goes into the example. The last sentence, by a.
Will pay the public utility department their portion of expenses. And the public utility, okay, or provide equivalent services. Services.
Financial acqui- equivalent services.
Alright, that's good.
Are you alright with that, Johnny?
Oh, yeah.
Equivalent services.
Okay.
Okay. I, I would, I would go as far as to say, and materials, because you are supplying piping and so forth, is that correct?
No, no, I think, Ken, Timmy's.
No, Timmy's supplying material, I'm supplying labor.
This, this was just an estimate if he was doing the whole job.
Alright.
What, what'd you write down, Hannah, what did you say?
Or provide, uh, equivalent financial services, equip, provide financial equivalent services.
Alright.
Or provide financial equivalent services.
Is everybody, is everybody.
Monetary, monetary services.
Financial.
Equivalent monetary services. Monetary basis.
Okay, equivalent monetary services.
Alright, is everybody alright with that?
I'm cool with that.
Alright, let's have a motion that we accept the, the extension policy as amended. Have a motion?
So, I'll make a motion that we accept the, uh, policy amendment to our water department ordinance or policy.
Okay, do I have a second?
As amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, lights aye. Y'all want to move through, move on forward now. Thank you, sirs. Alright. That's all the citizens comments we have. Alright, Dan, we, we love you, you know that.
I'm gonna take trouble this time. I, I'm gonna try to remind you guys of something. In the year of nineteen hundred and seventy-seven, seventy-eight timeframe, reference this water for the county. It was approved by the citizens of the county and by the then board of commissioners to pursue funds to put in a kind of water system. That kind of water system was to be put in, as I understand it, according to the people I talked to, in three stages. The intent of that water system was to go to every road that is either county or state maintained. Now, if that's true, then why is this guy paying anything? Now, that was, that was the contentions of, of the policy to start with, which is one of the best policies that we have in the county.
If I had a copy of that policy in front of me saying that, and I had read it and know that was true, I would agree with you. But the policy I've got that's written here, that's come to me as a commissioner in two thousand and eleven, is what I've got to deal with.
I agree with you. But then that's where your historical records comes in effect. Do you not have historical records?
I can't tell you that. I have no idea where we were on water, but I know that a lot of, a lot of the, um, water lines weren't where they said they were when they got ready.
And, uh, I'll give you an example right now. There is a number of roads that do not have that done.
That's probably true.
And at that same timeframe, it was agreed, I believe Bud Uwe was the one to be the one in charge of the water. He formerly employed over there in Hurford County at, uh.
C F Industries.
C S Industries, and then he came over here. And I think Bud will probably verify it also, because it was my understanding, I've not, have not seen anything in black and white, that the funds for the water department was supposed to be kept separate. Not be put in the general fund. Supposed to be kept separate until certain stages of that money would pay back. That make sense? Alright, then that, that money was paid back, and then all of a sudden we started sending it in the county general fund or wherever it's going to now.
Let me interrupt.
Where does it go to?
It doesn't go anywhere, it's an enterprise fund. The water fund is the water fund.
Okay.
It's not in the general fund, so if you're gonna make this statement, no, it's not if the case, it is the case.
Now, if that's the case. If it's separate, like it's, like I say, if that's separate, then that's well and good too.
It is the case. It is. Yeah.
Uh, and like I say, I, I, I need to be corrected if I'm wrong, just, just like anybody else. But what I'm saying is, if that fund has been accumulating over the years, over the years, over the years, shouldn't there be funds that when someone comes before you to request it to go into an area that it has been failed to be put into over a period of years, then why should they have to pay over than the hookup fee in front of the property?
That may be the case, Dan, but then, and let me read this to you, this is where we're working at, this is the, the evolving document for the water plant to where we're at today. It says, the county may construct extensions to the water lines to points within its service areas, but the county shall not be required to make such installations unless the customer makes application for the services and advances to the county the entire cost of the installation. This is what's evolved to us today. We've just changed that for a thousand foot meter, so that we, part of the cost is gonna be absorbed by other ways.
Okay, so what y'all did, y'all made a, a, a policy that superseded the, the former policy.
That little one right there.
As amendment to that.
Yeah, instead of just following this completely, which we could've said, if you put the cost, right now, if we didn't do that, the cost, we go by this, or we change it completely.
What's the date of that document?
I have no, I just, it's just a piece of the document, they read, they brought it to us.
So what is the, the date?
I have no idea.
Anybody know?
Timmy, Timmy, Timmy brought this to us, uh, showing what the exact.
We need to find out what the date of that document is. When did, when did that document get modified?
It probably been modified several times over the years, but Bud, it was probably, and I don't know this for a fact, it was probably as Bud come along the system.
Yeah.
And, and they, they, they found out they couldn't afford.
It was originally started in seventy-seven, seventy-eight timeframe.
They probably come to a point where they couldn't afford to install lines up every road. I think that, they come back in three phases, I know they, they loop stuff around, so.
That's what the fund was supposed to be for, so where was the fund, what it got used for? If the, if the fund was appropriated, and the citizens paid for that fund to do the three concepts for all roads, then where did the money go?
I'm sure part of it went in that water tower at Willetton.
Well.
That was in.
Or, or are we in a situation like Edington? On the hospital. Or, or we in a situation like Edington on the hospital. You see what I'm saying? Probably, or is. Someone should be able to tell where that money went.
Are, are you making the assertion that there's no fund money for the water department?
I'm not saying nobody's taking anything from the water department. I am saying, what is the policy? Where did the money go?
The money hasn't gone anywhere. It's in the water fund. That's what, that's what I'm trying to tell you. There's a water fund balance.
You told me that.
It is separate from the general fund.
I understand that.
Then, well, I don't understand your assertion of, we're like Chawan, and the money's not there.
Well, what I'm talking about, and I, I'll explain that. They turned around and got funds for all three stages. They implemented stage one. I was the prime example of that. I was building a house. I come over here and I, I said, "Hey, look, I'm building a house here. Uh, can I pay my twenty-five dollars and, and have a water fee to put in?" "Well, sure, Mr. Bazemore, sure." All right, my house got built on a water meter. And I had already paid the money. All right, they come down Taylor Mill Road, but it didn't go down Little Island Road. Then they're gonna say, "Well, it comes in on the second phase of Little Island Road." "Oh, wait, then he'll like to take my money." You know what they did? They went out there and baited a line from Taylor Mill Road to my front yard. I paid nothing for that.
Well, I think, to clarify, Mr. Bazemore, the enterprise fund for the water plant stays with that fund.
I understand that.
Now, when we say that the county has a two-point-six-million-dollar fund balance, guess what?
Okay, it does not include that.
Yes, it does.
Okay, well, then, why did I get double?
No, no, it has, two-point-six general fund balance has absolutely, positively, nothing to do with the water fund or the water fund balance.
That's a separate, right. What is, what is in the water?
I think it's about one-point-nine.
One-point-nine million dollars, okay.
So, you got one-point-nine million in that fund for the water?
No. What I said was, I think it's about one-point-nine, so don't go hold me to that. What I said was...
Well, price, give or take is, you know?
Right.
Well, my point is, is that that fund balance is still there for the water department.
Okay.
It's not, the county doesn't have free access to it, so to speak.
Well, it may the county don't have access to.
It can only be spent for water-related items. You have...
Such as water lines?
Such as, such as building water towers, such as new pump stations, such as new wells, such as anything that's related to the water department.
Do include putting in a line to a piece of property.
It could.
Okay, well, why don't we do the man wants right?
Because what the commissioners are saying is they're trying to set a policy so that every person that comes and says, "I want a thousand-foot line", has some general guidelines in which we're gonna operate under, which is what they've done today.
Well, it looks to me like you have passed a policy to pass the buffer on to the, the landowner to pay the fee to get the water line in when the initial concept of the water line was to be, uh, put into each road that was either state or county maintained. And, uh, so, so much for that. But I'm glad I, I got that clarified, that there's two accounts. And, uh, so instead of me thinking about the, the, the two-point-some-million dollars for the, the general fund was a part of the water fund, then I was under the wrong, uh, impression there. And, and now we got another one-point-nine million. Hey, dollars sound good. Now, you're getting up there closer to the four-point-something that's available between the two. But only can be used one-point-nine or so for the water itself. Okay, and I appreciate that. But I was just trying to get that, that, just as a reminder of the concept of what happened when the water was put in to start with. And we've made policy changes to take care of different things in that issue. The next thing is, to get to the courthouse, and you were talking about paying possibly some thirty-some-thousand dollars for a two-point-five-million return. Uh, I believe that's the verbiage I hear, and correct me if, if I'm wrong. And when we're talking about that two-point-five-million dollars, is that grants, or is that loans that we're gonna have to pay back and that the, uh, taxpayer's gonna have to pay? Or is it a grant that where we're only gonna have to pay the thirty-some-thousand dollars, and we won't get two-point-five million?
At this point in time, this is, this is the contract that they have made a, a proposal to us, saying that it's, it's the phase for to do the courthouse is, uh, estimated total budget to complete the courthouse is two-point-seven-five million to three-point-two-five, I believe, if I'm right.
Okay.
If we go forward and say, "All right, we're gonna do it come hell or high water." That's what it's gonna cost.
Okay.
All right, now, part of that is, is this contract is, is trying to find grant money to offset all of that. I mean, that's part of this contract.
And that's part of that thirty-four thousand dollars paying for that, right?
See, there's a thirty-three, and then there's a thirty-four, and then the bottom line is doing the work.
Okay.
The first sixty-seven thousand, roughly seventy thousand dollars would be drawings, engineering, helping to find money. And then that, that's what the way it's, it's written up in three phases, and that's what the contract says. We haven't accepted it. We haven't done, they voted on it. That's what the workshop is gonna be. See what we're gonna do with that.
Now, are you saying that until you get that information and find out what we're gonna get? Two-point-five million or three-point-two million?
Three-point-two-five would be a number that I would use in my head, because that's the high end of it.
Okay, and say that, uh, we are gonna get grants for that?
We're hoping, if we do this, we're hoping.
We don't know that, but you would have to invest the thirty thousand to find out.
I, I can understand that.
And if, you know, discussions at the workshop show that it's, you know, a good, uh, possibility or feasibility to move forward, then you wanna move forward with that.
Now, if you don't get those grants, what take place?
Well, you, you, you've invested thirty thousand dollars.
I realize that you paid your forfeiture to thirty-some-thousand dollars for a service which the man should get.
And we may have to look at all, other alternatives. Whether or not, what do we want to do? Do we want to, uh, look at doing what we did at Sunbury School or doing something else? We, we don't know.
We're in the research.
Uh, uh, do you think that it might line up to where that they piecemeal it, a quarter-million dollars here and a half-million dollars there? And then they wind up on the taxpayer to pay it?
I hope not. I'm, I'm not planning on letting that thing happen. My personal thought is...
Now, if we get grants, and they're matching grants, I would suggest that before we spend money, that we find out what we do get, and I'm quite sure you will. And then, if it's a matching grant, that we got to match so much money for it, then that's where I think that we should use this library as a learning process, not to go through the total fiasco we went through on that. And bring everything above the board. And not just say, "Well, we're gonna get a grant and leave off the part, we got a grant for a million dollars, but now we got to match it with two-hundred-fifty thousand." And leave that off and mislead the people. See what I'm saying? Put it all together. Say, "We're getting a million-dollar grant, but we got to pay a two-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar, uh, matching grant, matching fund to qualify for it." And let the people know about that. And then start a process to get the opinion, and I say again, of the majority. Not twenty-five or thirty people especially, but of the majority. We did not go through that complete process to get the opinion of the majority that was available to. Two ways was mentioned by people on this board. One was, was to get a survey. The other was a voter referendum. And you heard each other say, that some of them said, "Well, I'm not against voter referendum." Or one of them said, "Well, I think we should have voter referendum." But when it come time to vote for it, where's the voter referendum at? The vote against it, or either didn't vote at all in it that. I don't think we need to go through that anymore. I think we need to be upfront and honest with the people. And I'm quite sure you will be, because we have learned something about what we went through with, with, with this issue. And, uh, I, I state that this is a new year, and I think that good things can happen here in Gates County. And I think you people can be the backbone of making it happen. And I thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right. That ends our citizens' comment. Commissioners, you have any comments before we close, or move into, um, closed session? If not, I'll entertain a motion to the closed session.
So moved.
So.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. All done, we got one more little issue we need to take care of before we leave. Uh, we need to approve the excerpt for that the citizens' comment, or the, the public hearing was held today for the LGC. The Gates County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting minutes of January fourth, two thousand and twelve. The Gates County Board of Commissioners had a regular session at ten a.m. Wednesday, January fourth, at two thousand and twelve in the main courtroom, two oh two Court Street, Gatesville. Commissioner Twine, uh, Commissioner Twine, Jordan, Horace Owens, and Jernigan were present. Also present was County Mayor Toby Chaplin, County Attorney Pitt Godwin. But always approved excerpt from the January fourth, two thousand and twelve Commissioners' meeting minutes. Commissioner Jernigan made a motion to open the public hearing for the proposed financing contract to build a new county library. Commissioner Horace seconded the motion. Motion carried without opposition. Verbal comments were made by four citizens: Ed Booth of Gatesville, Dan Bazemore of Yure, Carolyn Riddick of Yure, and Earl Roundtree of Sunbury. Commissioner Jordan made a motion to close the public hearing for the proposed financing contract to build a new county library. Commissioner Owens seconded the motion. Motion carried without opposition. Uh, we also will include the, uh, county website address, so that if anyone here would like to, uh, check out the, uh, public hearing online, is available for them to look at. Do I have a motion that we accept these minutes as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. All right, uh, anything else today? If not, we'll entertain a motion to, uh, we've got to recess until the, uh, five o'clock on January the eighteenth for the evening meetings.
Send out a new notice.
Yes, please.
I need, I need a motion that we recess to that time.
So moved.
Uh, I motion in a second recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye.